Five miles away. I work around in the Cambridge, Boston, Charles Town.
Everyone all set? I'll call the Londonary Planning Board meeting to order for May 10th, 2023. Time marches on. Just want to note for everyone who is here that this room has two exits on the right-hand side of the audience, the front of the room and the back of the room. If we need to evacuate for any reason, we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you, go outside, move out from the building, and don't come in to our fire officials have instructed us to do so. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise. We'll pledge allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Jake should be right back anyway. Al's not going to be here tonight, and Jeff is not going to be here tonight, and Ted is going to be late. So I'll appoint Tony to vote for Al. Give you baptism by fire, Tony, but you've been here before, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I'll do Jason for Jeff. So that gives us, right now, we'll have a total of eight voting members as a quorum, and we can proceed. So our meeting is divided into, tonight it'll be two parts. Administrative board work at the beginning where we got our business done, and then we have four plans to hear under old business, and they're all continued plans. So approval of minutes under administrative board work, we have none to approve. We usually do that at the first meeting of every month. Regional impact determinations, you have any, Kelly?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
I didn't see any there. And Jake is back. And discussions with town staff, you have anything, John?
No, nothing this evening.
Okay, all's quiet and good?
Yep.
Terrific. Kelly?
A couple items this evening, Mr. Chair. First, we have an extension request for the Patori site plan, which is tax map 13 lot 99, 15 Rockingham Road. The applicant's requesting a 60-day extension to their conditions of approval, which brings the request to July 9th, 2023, for the board's consideration.
Okay, and do you feel that they could finish up what they need to do in the 60 days?
I do, and actually, the applicant's engineer is here as well, Mr. Eric Mitchell, if you had any additional questions, but staff has discussed with the applicant and their engineer.
Sixty days is good, it can get done. Okay, because sometimes we, if there's a little bit of a problem or something, we'll give like another 30 days, what, about 60 days? Okay, any questions from the board? If not, I will take a motion to...
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for a 60-day extension to tax map 13 lot 99, 15 Rockingham Road, the Patori site plan.
I have a motion by Jake.
Second.
Second by Jason. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Extentions, and the chair votes affirmative, motion carries, and Patori Brothers have an extension to the 9th of July, 2023. And I think you had another item too, Kelly.
Yes. So staff was contacted by the engineer representing Green Mountain Messenger, which is located at 57 Harvey Road. This property received a site plan approval for an approximately 14,000 square foot building, facility, back in 2016. Staff was contacted regarding the construction of truck parking spaces that were previously approved but not actually constructed, and that's what you see appear on the screen. In addition to that, moving the dumpster location and installing a vertical CO2 tank in the former location of the dumpsters. With regard to the truck parking spaces, a couple of things would need to take place prior to that happening, such as financial guarantees, a pre-con meeting, things of that nature. What we're looking for from the board tonight is some guidance on whether or not the board feels we can proceed with this review administratively, or if this is something that you'd like to see come back to you for a formal site plan amendment.
How does the board feel on this?
I don't see any reason why you wouldn't be able to handle this internally.
I agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay. It was in agreement. So we'll handle that administratively with staff. I think it's rather minor, since they already have the parking spaces designated on the current plan.
All right.
Okay. And Ted is here, so we've got nine voting members right now. And next, in the old business, we have a public hearing on an application for a formal review of subdivision and site plan for our 21-unit, single-detached residential development, 22 Young Road, tax map six, lot 53, Zone Residential 3. Edgar and Winifred Pitts are the trustees, owners, and 20 Young Road, tax map six, lot 58-2, Zone Residential 3. Cedar Crest Development is the owner, and Cedar Crest Development is the applicant, and this plan was continued from April 5th, 2023, since it lacked completeness, so we could not accept jurisdiction of it.
Right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there are no outstanding checklist items. Staff would recommend that the board vote to accept the application as complete, because it is substantially complete and contains sufficient information to invoke the board's jurisdiction to allow the board to make an informed decision.
Okay, thanks, John. Board has no questions, I will accept a motion for completeness of this application.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to accept the application as complete.
Second.
Motion by Jake, second by Ted. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Extentions, and the chair votes affirmative. So the plan is complete. What this does is we accepted it because we have sufficient information and wish to render a judgment, and it starts a 65-day time period in which this board does have to render a decision, and it also starts the presentation and the public hearing.
Great.
So just identify, I know you're familiar, but just identify yourselves for our records, please.
Sure, of course. Jeffrey Brem, I'm the civil engineer with Maesner Brem Corporation out of Salem, New Hampshire and Westford, Mass.
I'm Aaron Orso with Cedar Crest Development, out of Londonary, New Hampshire.
Okay, can proceed with your plan. Just to note, we have our traffic engineer here, which is part of our third-party review system, as basically to, you know, counteract your traffic engineer, so.
Understood.
You might have questions on your traffic study.
Sure. Are those papers for me, by any chance?
Nope.
Okay. Didn't want to leave anything on the table. Location of this project is 20 and 22 Young Road. Aaron, representing Cedar Crest Development, bought 20 Young Road and 22 Young Road as an adjacent parcel. We'll talk about how he also is in the process, sorry, he bought 22 Young Road and he's in the process of buying 20 Young Road. It's a 25.4-acre combined area for both properties. It was rezoned, you've seen this property before for the last couple of years, on several occasions, as well as last month. It was rezoned to R3 at the applicant's request, and the purpose for rezoning was so he could do a residential project, which is what we're proposing here today. 21 units, single-family lots in that zone, which is allowed. The minimum lot area, when you do that, is 5,000 square feet, minimum frontage 50 feet, and there's a slew of other zoning regulations which we meet in that R3 zoning. One of which is the density determination. It's done by a soil computation, and that's why, you may remember a couple of years ago, we were here on that issue. That's under Section 4223B, and we presented information to show that how we arrived at 21 units based upon the soils. The soils were done by a soil scientist, and I believe that's already reviewed. The proposal is all 21 units to be three bedrooms, and we're providing a large amount of open space as part of the requirement. We are required to have 10.16 acres of open space on the 25 acres. We're providing 17.83 acres of open space, almost all of which is usable, which is 16.45. So I just make a note here in my notes that it's 75% over the requirement. That open space is all located in a block of land, which is beneficial for wildlife and for use for passive recreation and so forth. It's also on the other side of, the property is bisected by a gas line, and we had multiple plans over the last couple of years, most of which included crossing that gas line, and there's more cons than pros to do that. We're not crossing the gas line with this plan. We're actually using the gas line, that was one of the comments that was made by your planning staff, to use it and connect some pathways and trails to that gas line. Utilities, water is by Penachak Water, sewer is private onsite with a series of private septic systems. Gas is by extension of gas from Liberty Utilities. We have underground telephone, electric cable. Those service letters have all been submitted as part of our application. For stormwater, we're proposing two basins, two stormwater management facilities, one close to Young Road, and, thank you, to the right of the plan that you have there now, and one in the back of the property, towards the rear. These are subject to your review by the town consultants, as well as John and others. We also, if you remember, the front basin, the basin near Young Road, we were proposing to maintain the existing driveway that Mr. Bennett used for his house there on his two acres. That's way to the right of that plan. And we talked to the Conservation Commission again, quite some time ago, and they had asked us if we could remove that driveway and culvert and reconnect the two wetlands. And we discussed that at length, we came back and said we would do that. The question is timing. We were going to do it at a later phase because of the requirements of a CUP and requirements of, and the fact that our soil consultant switched jobs and other issues, and we were going to just do it as a separate phase because it wasn't required for this project. That caused some issues, and so, one of which was the issue last month, that was one of the conditions that wasn't met. So we applied for a CUP permit in this application tonight, went back to Conservation, and of course, this is their request, so they voted favorably to recommend to you that we be granted a conditional use permit to remove that driveway, remove that culvert, and reconnect the two wetland areas to become one wetland area again. And I could say this assuredly, they're 100% in favor of that, so. And that's one of the things we're going to be talking about tonight. Unless you have detailed questions, I'm going to leave my presentation at that. We do still, you still need to hear from me on waivers, and I don't know if you want to take questions now before we get into the waivers.
Okay, any questions from the board at this point? Actually, what we'll do, we'll actually listen to everything you have to say, and the way we do it, we go to, you know, staff input on it, we'll do the board input, and then we'll do the public input.
Very good. So I'll jump right into the waivers then.
Yes.
So it's not, from a civil point of view, there's only three waivers, I believe. So let's go through them. One of which is that, if you notice on the plan, there's a curve coming in is okay, but the next curve, clockwise direction, kind of going from west to north, that curve is a tighter curve than is normally required for 35 mile an hour roadway. We like the curve because, number one, it stops us from having to go across that gas line that I just talked about, and number two, it slows traffic down. Number three, that's where our park is, and we kind of like the park in the middle there. There's all kinds of benefits that we thought, but it requires a waiver because you need site distance requirements to go 35 miles an hour. We don't want people going 35 miles an hour on this curve, and so we talked with staff, and they said, "Well, ask for a waiver, but let us know what speed you would be dropping to," because technically we'd be dropping, we would be asking for a waiver, not for the curve radius, but the speed. So we did the calculation, and it works out to 20 miles an hour. So we're asking for a waiver to reduce the speed from 35 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour. Second waiver is the driveways. Each of the driveways that now come onto that roadway have to meet a certain site distance requirement in each direction, 250 feet, I believe. And the fact is, since we're going to a 20 mile an hour speed limit, that site distance requirement is reduced, so we're asking for a waiver of that as well. So that's a Section 3.09 F3 driveways. And lastly, there's one small section of pipe where we have less than three feet of cover. We're providing 2.75 feet of cover and change the pipe type from a HDPE plastic pipe to a concrete pipe in that section, and I believe staff is going to report that they recommend approval of all those waivers. But I'll let them speak for themselves. Next, we have two traffic issue waivers, and our traffic consultant couldn't be here, but I've been prepped, and I'm going to give it my best shot in explaining the traffic waivers. So first of all, this is Section 3.14E.1 and 3.14E.2. For background, we're in a very unusual situation. We're one of the few R3 lots, I think maybe the only R3 lot that hasn't been developed yet, number one. Number two, because we're in an R3 lot doing a residential project, we could do a commercial project, but the project is residential. Either one, because we're in an R3, we have to follow site plan rules and subdivision rules. So normally, a site plan would come in here for commercial, and they have to follow the site plan rules. Normally, a subdivision would come under the subdivision rules in R3 zone. If you're doing a subdivision, you have to follow both rules, which is fine, we're following both rules, but it's a little bit unusual because you're going to ask the question, I'm trying to beat you to the punch, why haven't we seen this before? And the answer is because we're doing both subdivision and site plan because we're in an R3. So now, what is this, these waivers, we're asking for two, what we consider minor traffic waivers, but they are required to issue from this board. And essentially, the issue comes from where do we access the property? When Aaron first proposed his development, we came to the town and met with staff and said, "Well, this is my property, it has 1,260 feet of frontage on Nashville Road," and so forth. And, you know, without, it doesn't take a lot of intelligence to realize coming off of Nashville Road is a big traffic issue. So staff said, "Why don't you see if you could look at Young Road and come off of Young Road?" And so we did, and eventually bought the land from Bennett. Now, nobody was pushing anybody to do anything, but it seemed like the right thing to do. So he went and bought a couple acres from the adjacent property owner, combined it with this piece, or will be combining it with this piece. And that's where we want to come off for our access point. That all makes sense. The weird part is, the regulation that I'm going to ask for waivers has to do with the fact that Young Road has so little traffic on it that we are like the biggest user of the road, so to speak. Now, if we came off of Nashville Road, then definitely would be no waiver necessary. So let me discuss what these waivers are. The first one, 314E1, says, "If not more severely limited under other provisions or other laws or regulations," which is not applicable, "the absolute increase in calculated intersection delay under build conditions shall not be more than 10 to 20 seconds." So this is the delay issue. So you come out to the road, how long do you wait? Well, coming out to Young Road is not a problem, but it says any street. So our traffic consultant looked at all the streets in the area. So he looked at Young Road, Nashville Road, Old Nashville Road across the street, and evaluated all those. Well, we're okay on Nashville Road, obviously, we have 21, let me get my notes, 21 vehicle trips per day PM peak, 17 vehicle trips per day AM peak. However, there's only 21 vehicles there now, so, or 20 vehicles now. So 21 divided by 20 is 105%. So we're way over 10%, or 20%, because we're only have 20 vehicles, basically 20 vehicles over 20 vehicles. Now, if this project were across the street coming out on Old Nashville Road, which is also a very lightly-used road, amazingly, that road has 200 vehicle trips per day. So it's just because, and we wouldn't need the waiver, it's just because we're coming out on an extremely lightly-used roadway, Young Road, that we need, and there's no vehicles on it, basically, and that's why we need the waiver. You haven't seen this before because we haven't done R3s in town. Nope, you know, nobody's done this kind of project on this little tiny road before. But it does make sense to come out on Young Road. Similarly, the next waiver is also kind of the same thing. Average daily traffic volume shall not be increased by more than 1/3 above the no-build level on any street. So we have volumes of, what did I say, 21? I said that backwards. That, I just gave you the information for the second waiver. We have 21 over 21. The delay that we had is a delay not on Young Road. So the first issue is a delay. It's the operation for the new roadway, Lily Lane, onto Young Road, no problem. Operation Lily to left onto Egg Road, no problem. Operation to Lily right on Young Road, no problem. It's only a problem when we get to Nashville Road. Now, you take the Nashville Road in this section, you've all been there, taking a right is not a problem, it's taking a left out of Nashville Road. We have more than a 20-second delay. It's there now, more than a 20-second delay, and we're increasing it as well. So that's just the way it is. But I will tell you, if you took, if you wanted to go on Nashville Road to the left, we've talked about it at staff level, you would come out Lily Lane and not necessarily take a right, because if you took a left on Young Road, you would eventually come back to Nashville Road at a better intersection, easier to take your left. And so we assumed worst case, for purposes of the study, I didn't assume it, the traffic consultant, they like to use worst-case scenarios, he sent all the traffic to the right on Young Road. Probably, most of the traffic is going to take a left on Young Road and come onto that other intersection, but it's further away, it's outside of his traffic limit. So he said, "I don't want to do it outside of my traffic limit, I'll just send all the traffic this way." And obviously, the only issue was a delay going left onto Nashville Road from Young Road, which exists right now. So the two of those, the two waivers, we've met with staff, we've talked about it, we've talked about it with your review engineers, and we need the waivers to go forward, so, and it's, obviously, that's your purview. So we're here, I'll do the best I can to answer any questions on the traffic report. I don't know, I think some of you saw the buildings, the architecture that Aaron had previously submitted to you, their beautiful-looking plans, it's going to be a beautiful subdivision, you know, massive amounts of open space. We hope when you grant the five waivers and eventually grant us conditional approval tonight.
I would like to also add, in regards to the taking a right out of Lily Lane 2102, one of the big concerns for staff, and we have diagrammed that in one of our submissions as well, is was it going to create a queuing issue that was going to cause a blocking of the driveway, the new Lily Lane? None of that was ever affected, and that's what kind of, when we originally went into the full impact study, or traffic impact study, that's when these two other waivers were triggered, because we were looking into whether or not we were going to create a queuing issue that was going to block Lily Lane. That's obviously a concern with the fire department being across the street, and we were happy to find out that that wasn't going to be a problem, but it obviously triggered these other two waivers that we're describing to you right now.
Okay.
And that, and let me follow up with that. That exhibit was submitted to the town showing that even if you had five vehicles queued up, it still wouldn't impact the intersection. And that, the planning board consultant asked us to present that to you as well. And so we did the worst, our traffic consultant did the worst case and said, "All right, they're worrying about queuing, let's send all the traffic that way and see how many cars back up, and see if it impacts the intersection." So that's why we did it conservatively like that.
Okay, go to staff, the board, and then the public.
Yep, I'm going to go through the waivers as far as the first four waivers as they relate to the roadway design and the drainage features out there. Applicant is asking a waiver to Londonary Site Plan Regulations 3.04R, excuse me, subdivision regs, Section 3.09R, Table 1, pertaining to the roadway horizontal design. The applicant's proposed roadway does not meet the proper horizontal design for a 35-mile per hour roadway in accordance with ASHTO in Section 309R, Table 1 of the subdivision regs. Minimum centerline radius to meet the required design is 515 feet. Submitted design indicates a centerline radius of 180 feet. Staff does support granting the waiver as the streets are private, they're designed only for local use by the residents, and their proposed design speed meets the 20-mile-per-hour design speed. Second waiver request was to Section 309R, Table 1, pertaining to the roadway vertical design. The applicant's proposed roadway vertical design does not provide the minimum crest K value of 29 or the SAG K value of 49 for a 35-mile-per-hour design speed in accordance with the ASHTO and the regulations. Staff supports granting this waiver as the streets are private, designed only for local use by the residents, and proposed design speed meets the 20-mile-per-hour design speed. Third waiver request was pertaining to the Section 3.09F, the driveway width. Applicant's driveway design does not provide the proper driveway width of 12 feet in accordance with the regulations. In addition, the proposed driveways do not provide a low point 10 feet from the edge of the roadway. Payment is typically required. Staff supports granting this waiver as the streets are private and designed only for local use by the residents. Section, the fourth waiver request was to Section 3.09G3 pertaining to the drainage pipe cover. The indicated drain pipe cover shown at CB 24 to 25 in the profile does not provide the minimum three feet of cover over the pipe per Section 309G3 of the subdivision regs. Staff does support the waiver request as the plans provide reinforced concrete pipe where the pipe cover is less than the, has not met the three-foot cover requirement. Kelly will go through the traffic comments, but I'm just going to continue with the design review items. Applicant indicates a DES subdivision permit, alteration of terrain, and a DOT permit are pending. In addition, a DES septic permits and a town and Londonary stormwater permit are listed on the revised cover sheet. Applicant should submit for and obtain all permit projects, project permits, indicate the permit approval numbers on the permit table on Sheet 1, and provide copies to the planning department for their files in accordance with the regs. Item 8, applicant has updated the proposed roadway intersection design that includes a low point, a minimum of 10 feet from the existing roadway edge of pavement. However, the revised design does not address how the low point would drain. Roadway shoulder improvement and flowage rights may be needed to provide an appropriate design. Recommend the applicant to arrange a meeting with Department of Engineering and Environmental Services to discuss the revised roadway intersection design. Item 9, updated roadway design indicates under drains are provided for the roadway design. However, the discharge is into an underground chamber system. The chamber system would be approximately seven feet below existing grade, but it's unclear how the system would function with the adjacent test pit 503 indicating ledge at three feet. And we're requesting that they arrange a meeting so we can review that and that proposed design. Item 10 is to revise the underdrain inverts into the catch basins on the roadway profiles to match pipe crowns. Item 11, remove the planning board signature block from Sheet 2. Item 12 is 12 comments as they relate to the stormwater report, I'm not going to belabor that. Item 13 is to address the traffic review comments of May 10th, 2023. And lastly, to verify the DRC comments of the planning, assessing, building, Conservation Commission, Heritage Commission, Fire Department, and the zoning department have been met. Again, as Jeff went through, there are four waiver requests to the subdivision regs and two waiver requests to the site plan regs as they relate to the traffic. And lastly, the applicant is proposing improvements within the CO district, Conservation Overlay District. They'll need a conditional use permit approved by the planning board. The board will need to consider that, the conditional use permit as part of this review. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll discuss waiver number five and number six, again, relating to...
So, I'll discuss waiver number five and number six, again, relating to the traffic analysis. The first waiver is from the Site Plan Regulations, Section 3.14.1, and this is pertaining to the intersection delay under build conditions. As the applicant indicated, their analysis shows an increase in delay. That is, outside of our, our standard, our regulations, that standard being no more than 10 to 20 seconds. The second waiver related to traffic is from the Site Plan Regulations, Section 3.14.1.2, pertaining to daily average, or, excuse me, average daily traffic volumes. And again, the traffic analysis submitted indicates the standard is not met under the build conditions. That standard being, shall not be increased by more than one-third above the no-build level on any street. Staff is recommending that the board consider these two waivers. And, as the board discusses their decision on these waivers, to utilize what is in our Site Plan Regulations, specific to waiver requests. And I've noted that in the staff memorandum as well. And so, we're going to be looking to the board to have a discussion about those, I guess, waiver options for you.
Two waivers.
Yep. And specifically, the criteria in our regulations relating to when the board considers waiver requests and the standards at which you should be utilizing when considering waivers.
Okay.
And then, I'll, I'll talk about the conditional use permit as well. So, the applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow, excuse me, to do work within the Conservation Overlay District relating to the removal of a driveway culvert and recon, um, reconnection of two wetlands on either, on each side. Again, the Conservation Commission essentially requested this, and they're, they're supportive of the conditional use permit, and staff is as well.
Okay. Thank you. Go to the board. I'll start with Ann.
I, I, I'd have questions of staff.
Yes.
Mr. Trotier. Or, I'm not sure, who should I address, Kelly or John?
Where's the question at?
It has to do about the traffic volumes, coming out of Young Road onto Route 122. Now, it says, we're talking about 12 a.m. peak hours and 11 p.m. peak hour trips. Now, I want to understand. Does that mean there's a maximum of 12 at any hour of the day, coming from that project?
I think, again, Ann, I don't see exactly what you're looking at, but...
I'm looking under 10 trips during each peak hour, being right turns.
Gotcha. So, that, that was my recollection, that was at the intersection of Young Road and 102.
A maximum of 12.
Correct.
Okay. During one hour. And each turn would take in a, each car would sit there, something less than three-quarters of a minute to a minute and a half longer, at max, the max. Delay, the delays, excuse me, the delays. Yeah, increase of 80, 81, 40.
The applicant should be answering these questions, again, it's...
I just want to understand.
Understood. Yep. You're right, the maximum would be coming out is 12. The delay, there's a table that looks like this in your report, so I'm going to be reading off of that.
She doesn't have the report.
Oh, okay. If you had the report and you had this table, you would see that the Young Bro, Young Road's southbound left turn movement, currently under the no-build scenario, is 20, is 32.3 seconds, and it's going to grow, you're right, 80, a minute and a half to 113.7 seconds. And similarly, the afternoon grows from 40.8 to 150.7, so, a little over a minute and a half.
Okay. And that's if they could get out to the roadway.
Oh, they, they have no issues at Young Road and Lila, Lily, our roadway, there's no issues taking a right.
Taking a right now during the early morning?
Yeah, there's no issues there.
But if there's other cars coming from crossroads?
Hold on a minute.
I want to understand.
There's no issue, Ann, at Lily and Young Road.
Okay, Lily and Run, okay.
Yeah, okay.
I'm talking about once they get on Young Road.
The issue is at Young Road and 102.
Right. So, that's what we're talking about.
Correct.
That's, once they got on there.
So, they take a right out of Lily Lane and they approach, they're, then on Young Road, and they approach 102.
Right.
It's what they're doing at that.
Okay. Just because I expect to be a stack up of cars there in the morning from crossroad also, I would expect to be cars there. So, they'd have to be able to get onto that roadway before they could take a right on to, onto Young, they'd have to get onto Young Road first before they can get onto 102.
Correct.
And we're talking about the 102 intersection.
Correct.
Okay.
They, they do not have issue getting from Lily Lane onto Young Road.
They don't?
No, they do not.
Correct.
Okay, so, when there's morning, you know, heavy traffic, they still don't have a problem? Because I saw a stack of five cars, maximum.
Again, getting out of Lily.
Right.
They don't have any problem.
Okay.
It's when you're getting, when you're getting young.
That's why we did the stack of five cars, because that related to the report, that there'd be five cars there at any one-hour period or any decent period. That would be the absolute most, and what would happen to the Lily Road and Young Road intersection? Would you impede the intersection? The answer was no. So, there is no, and we're only talking about, there's only eight trips per hour. So, when you're thinking about this, you're not, we're tying into tiny digits, and I will tell you that I talked to Kim Hasabartini today, and his, he's kind of exasperated, but it doesn't show up in his report, but these are such small numbers that the model doesn't really work at these numbers. And that's where his exasperation is, because he can't, he can't make the model be more realistic. He said, "In reality, it's not going to happen." John, it's the same way when we do drainage reports. When we get to, when, we designed drainage, the report is designed for tens of hundreds of acres. When we're down to sites of a half acre, and we're breaking that into subcatchment numbers, subcatchments, we all know the report, the model doesn't work anymore, but we have no other way of doing it, so we use the model, and then we use engineering judgment to make sure things are going to work. And that's just typical, that's what we always, the same thing's happening to Kim, our traffic consultant, when you get to these tiny numbers. He knows the model's not working, but he can't do anything about it, other than be conservative, which is what he's done.
Okay. I just wanted to make, make sure I understood totally where those numbers are coming from.
Yeah.
And they took into consideration the fire department, the kitty daycare that's right around the area, and everything was taken into consideration.
Yep, the fire department, the road across the street, that's true, everything was...
Everything, okay. That's all, the question I had.
Johnny?
I'm going to pass at this time. You know, come back later on after you hear everybody else's comments.
Okay. Kelly?
I have a, a process question, Mr. Chair. I don't know who to address it to, but, on number 14. My understanding is that Conservation Commission and Heritage Commission are advisory-only. And my question is, why are we making the application verify that they have adequately addressed the comments of the Conservation Commission? If, if they are advisory, then the applicant doesn't have to address them. That's my understanding, and I need some clarification, please.
It's advisory to the planning board. The planning board makes the decision on it. I mean, with input from, from staff also, and I know there's not always agreement all, all the time also, but basically, it comes down to, it's a board decision, the planning board. At least we try to get as much input from, you know, staff and from the Conservation or Heritage, you know, Fire Department.
I understand that, but, but as I, as I read through this, and for those of you who don't know, I'm new to the board tonight, but I have been on the board previously, as I read through this very quickly, I looked at it and I said, this intimates to me, if I was on the other side of the table, and you all know that I have been, this intimates to me that, that the applicant has to follow, because this number 14 is saying that the applicant has to verify that the comments have been adequately addressed. And that, that, process-wise, it doesn't make sense to me, and I don't know why it's like that, and, and it just doesn't seem right. So, we, we can move on and deal with that at a later time, because...
I can respond to it if you'd like. So, in this, in this specific instance, the Conservation Commission comments are related to the conditional use permit, which I included to some degree in the, in the earlier portion of my, of our staff memorandum. However, the point you raise is what we just touched on at our work session last week, and that is specifically calling out the comments. That was, I didn't do that in this instance.
Okay.
But it has been a standard comment that we have, and typically, staff would use discretion.
It's a work in progress, and maybe something we need to clean up at a later date.
Absolutely.
I'm satisfied, thank you. I have nothing else.
Yeah, because we're working on the, the whole process.
Thank you.
Hasn't been done for, I think, 20 years.
So, no questions for me. I, I think that they've addressed everything to the best of their abilities, and I don't see any easier solution than those there, so I support the waivers as they're presented to us.
Jake?
I have to agree a little bit with what Mr. De just said. I, I understand where you're coming from, and I know we are, are working on that. I don't have much. I also agree with what Lynn just said. You know, it sounds like some of the roadway stuff makes sense, because they're avoiding going over the, the pipeline, so they're, they're keeping the community a little bit tighter, which is also keeping it further away from, from their neighbors to the east or west.
West.
Which would be, be cross-farmed there, and, and so I understand the, the reason for all the waivers on the roadway design standpoint, and I'm fine with the waivers from a traffic standpoint. I do believe you guys said there was no queuing issues from the development, in terms of at the, the Young Road and 102 intersection, there's no queuing issues getting onto Young Road.
That's correct. We have an exhibit on that, but yeah, showing five cars, which is basically running through the intersection at the highest peak hour with the traffic on Young Road and our traffic. Remember, as cars leave, cars join.
Yeah.
So, not all, there are 12 cars in that hour, but at one point in time, five would be, wouldn't possibly need to queue up.
Yeah.
And there's room for the five queue.
And the other thing to add to that is our model was based off of everything, every one of the homes in our development turning right.
Yeah.
Because we were concerned, our staff was concerned, that we were going to have an issue with that.
Yeah.
Even though we all realize if you live there, if you're going to live there and you're going to take a left, it's probably easier to take a left off Young Road and go to the next intersection.
Plus, depending on where you're heading, if you're heading to Manchester, if you're heading to Hudson, if you're heading to 93, there's three different routes right there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, like I said, we, we wanted to figure out worst-case scenario, that's why we, we steered it to the right.
Mr. Chair, I'm all set.
Okay. Ted?
I don't have any major comments. I hope everyone goes 20 miles an hour in the neighborhood.
It's private property, so it's their problem.
I'm sure the HOA boards will be all over that.
Have a good sheriff in there.
Roger?
Everything looks very good to me.
Thank you.
I believe you were spot-on on the use of those models when they get so small, there's really nothing you can, you know, if there were only one house there, you'd only be able to bring one car out, or you'd be, you know...
A hundred percent increase right there.
Yeah.
Percentages can be, you know, I think, tricky. You've got to understand the data that goes behind it. Bruce?
Living in an HOA, I can tell you that the residents will be very, very cognizant of the speed on the roadway. And I'm a big fan of the, the tighter and slower roadways as it is. There's no reason to be doing 35 miles an hour through a residential neighborhood, so I support the waiver in that, in that aspect. And I don't have any other comments about the, the project, it looks good.
Okay. Thanks. Jason?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Are there any butters or anyone from the public have any questions, comments, and concerns in regards to this plan? I'll start with the front row and work my way back, and just come either to the podium or use the microphone there, and I just need your name and address, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matt, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stephen Young. My address is 4 Young Road, so toward the daycare center. I'm going to just make a couple of comments, and my wife would like to comment as well, Barbara. We've been on the road since, well, before it was a road. My family settled into Londonderry in the 1750s. We've fought the wars and managed the development of the town. I think it was called Nutfield when we settled it. So, and, and I live in a historic house built by my great-great-great-grandfather in 1902. It's the only house on the National Register of Historical Buildings in Londonderry. And so, we're here for the long run. And I do not object to the project, per se, but I'm rather concerned about the traffic issues. We pull out of our house usually to the left and get to the Young Road entrance onto 102 that's next to the daycare center. And particularly at rush hour, it's a very difficult road to get on to. In fact, I sometimes go up crossroad and Adams and around just to get to crossroads because the intersection there is so difficult. I think if you, if you have been there, you know what I'm talking about. And my wife is going to say a little bit more about it, but I am very much concerned for me, for my house, for the daycare center, for the fire department, by the jump in traffic, especially if they go to the left. I've talked to Fire Chief O'Brien, and he's concerned. I hope he's reached out to you, because he told me that he thought these waivers were going to make a real problem for them. And for all of us in Londonderry, it's not just fires, it's all kinds of emergencies that those guys go to. So, if they have significant delays, I think it's going to be a major problem. And my wife is going to have a few more comments on that. And last thing, I wanted to very briefly read something that I'd like to submit to you. It's a short statement. "In addition to my oral testimony, I'd like to submit a copy of a document pictured in this email." I'll read it and I'll pass it to you guys, so you can pass it around if you want. Thank you. "Hopefully, this will give you a sense of how my ancestors have contributed to Londonderry's heritage and wise growth over the last 250 years. This document was written in 1767, before the American Revolution, and it set forth, sets forth a decision by the then-selectmen of Londonderry to build a road, perhaps one of the first roads in Londonderry, using land owned by many of my, of its first settlers. These included my ancestor, William Boyd, who built my house in 1802. By the way, he fought at Bunker Hill and was a hero of the Revolutionary War. I hope the planning board will also make the right decisions to protect the health and safety of Londonderry's residents and ensure the appropriate and wise use of land as required by the..." and ensure the appropriate and wise use of land as required by the laws of New Hampshire. I therefore urge you to deny the applicant's request for waivers of Londonderry's traffic standards and instead suggest that they go to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation to request access to Nashua Road 102 for their proposed subdivision entryway." With that, I will turn it over to my wife, Barbara Finnemore, for a few more comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless you have, after she speaks, if you have questions.
Yeah. And Barbara, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. On behalf of my husband, Ambassador Stephen M. Young, and myself, I'm testifying in strong opposition to the proposed location of the entryway to this project onto Young Road directly across the street from Londonderry Fire Station Two, rather than onto Nashua Road, where the vast majority of the project frontage is located. Dumping all the subdivision traffic onto Young Road would result in significant violations of Londonderry's own traffic impact analysis standards. It would also make it difficult, if not impossible, for the fire engines and ambulances of Londonderry Fire Station Two to respond to emergencies in time, which could literally mean the difference between life and death. The applicant's own traffic analysis, as we've heard tonight, demonstrates that locating the entryway on Young Road rather than directly onto 102 would increase traffic volumes on Young Road by over one-hundred percent in the morning peak and seventy-two percent in the afternoon peak. This is in direct violation of Londonderry Traffic Impact Analysis Standards, which requires that the average daily traffic volumes shall not be increased by more than one-third above the no-build level on any street. This increased traffic would cause potentially disastrous delays for fire engines and ambulances trying to turn onto Route 102 from Young Road. These standards state, if not more severely limited under other provisions or of other laws and regulations, "The absolute increase in calculated intersectional delay under billed conditions shall not be more than ten to twenty seconds." This proposed entryway would violate those standards, increasing AM peak delays by eighty-one point four seconds and PM peak delays by a hundred and nine point nine seconds. These delays would make it difficult, if not impossible, for Fire Station Two to comply with the National Fire Protection Association standards for the organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations to the public by career fire departments. The National Fire Protection Association recognizes that every second counts when responding to emergencies and disasters. Every second counts. Their standards call for the first engine to arrive on the scene within one-hundred-and-forty-one seconds after leaving the station. Yet with subdivision traffic routed onto Young Road, AM peak hour delays would increase to a hundred and thirteen point seven seconds, and PM delays would increase to a hundred and fifty point seven seconds. This means that during PM peak hours, Londonderry's fire engines and ambulance could still be waiting to turn onto Route 102 from Young Road long after they were supposed to be on the scene of a fire or other emergency. These risks to the health and safety of all the residents of Londonderry are completely unacceptable. The mission of the Londonderry Fire Department is to protect and maintain the well-being of our community by preventing and reducing the loss of life and property in Londonderry, resulting from fires, medical emergencies, disasters, and hazardous materials incidents. As my husband has testified, the Londonderry Fire Department is opposed to locating the entryway directly across from Fire Station Two, and they have made their concerns known to the Londonderry Town Government. Doubling the morning peak of traffic on Young Road would also have a significant negative impact on the health and safety of the more than two-hundred children aged six months to six years and their families who attend the Learning Tree Early Education Center at Two Young Road. School-related traffic congestion and the risks such congestion poses to the safety of the students, teachers, parents, residents, and motorists in and around school locations is already a significant problem in communities throughout the United States, including our own. These risks would be exacerbated by locating the entryway to the proposed subdivision on Young Road rather than Route 102. Young Road does not include any curbs or sidewalks, nor does it generally include any street lighting or other illumination. It has one unmarked travel lane in every direction and is not designed for heavy traffic. The applicant's traffic analysis recognizes that most of the traffic from the proposed development would go right down rural Young Road right past the Learning Tree Early Education Center towards the center of Londonderry and Route ninety-three. The owners of the Learning Tree are opposed to the Young Road entryway, and they've written a letter that they've asked me to submit to the planning board since they are unable to be present at this hearing tonight. The letter states that it is already can be a, quote, "treacherous adventure," unquote, for those families and children to get to and from the Learning Tree, and in particular during morning and afternoon rush hours. Finally, increasing peak load traffic along Young Road by over a hundred percent would also damage a priceless historic resource. As my husband has said, our home on Four Young Road, known as the General Mason J. Young House, is the only property in Londonderry with the designation "The National Register of Historic Places." This National Register of Historic Places is the official list of the nation's historic places worthy of preservation. It's part of a national program to support public and private efforts to identify, evaluate, and protect America's historical and archaeological resources. A applicant's plan would interfere with efforts to protect this irreplaceable national treasure. During its meeting last month to consider the applicant's proposal, a number of members of this planning board rightly expressed concern about setting a bad precedent by voting to consider the project complete when it was missing ten items. I urge the board today to consider what an even worse precedent would be set by voting to waive the clear violations of Londonderry traffic standards to allow the applicant to build an entryway onto Young Road. According to New Hampshire law, "The purpose of such local regulations, and indeed, the purpose of local planning boards, such as this one, are to, quote, 'enhance the public health, safety, and general welfare, and encourage the appropriate and wise use of land.'" Granting waivers to the applicant would defeat the very purpose of the regulations in exactly the type of situation they are designed to address, where major increases in traffic would put at risk the health and safety of more than two-hundred children, and indeed, every citizen of Londonderry dealing with a fire, emergency, or other disaster. Local planning boards are by law permitted to exercise reasonable discretion over the matters within their jurisdiction. But this discretion is not without limits. New Hampshire courts have been less inclined to defer to a board's discretion concerning matters of public health, safety, and environmental quality. I therefore urge the Londonderry Planning Board to deny applicants' requests for the traffic waivers and instead require them or suggest that they go to the New Hampshire State Department of Transportation to request access to Nashua Road for their proposed subdivision entry. Thank you for your attention. I would like to submit this written testimony for your consideration as well as a letter from the Learning Tree Early Education Center. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Mrs. Young a question? Did you say that the fire chief objected to the project coming out?
My husband spoke to him. He can answer that question.
Did he spoke to the town government, as far as your knowledge?
That's what we heard. Yes.
Was there any writ, letters written or anything?
I'm not aware.
That could have been forwarded to us?
I'm not aware of that.
We hadn't got any input there. No, the fire department has input, has design review part of it.
Mr., would you like me to respond? As is our standard process, this proposal circulated our design review committee, which includes the fire department. The fire department did provide comment, and that comment was, "The fire department has no objections to the proposed subdivision at this time." So, there was no written objection to the town government that we're in receipt of as part of this review process. Nor have I been made aware of any objection from the fire department verbally or otherwise. But through our review process, no, no objections were made about this proposal.
Okay, and the design review was at what point?
When this was first submitted to us, so back in December?
Okay, thank you. Well, I just wish they had sent us a letter if they, if they did have some concerns or, or come to a meeting and express their opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a letter or anything that would indicate that. Okay, I know there was a lady and gentleman in the back row wanted to speak also. Just your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Sarah Clark. I am in a butter to this property on Seven Copperfield Lane. My number-one concern about this project in various iterations of it have all stemmed around the traffic. And I strongly feel that you're being asked to make a decision with not even the correct data. You heard them say that it is a little tiny road and that it is easier to take a left out of the development on Young Road, travel in front of the daycare, also have Crosby coming in at that same intersection trying to come out onto 102. All these delays and waivers that we're talking about are if the residents of this development are taking a right. They even said they are more likely to take a left. So, I strongly feel that the traffic study that should have been submitted is around the 102 Young Road intersection that is closer to town down in front of that daycare. And that is the intersection all the residents have a concern about. And that's where we all sit because that's where ninety percent of the traffic goes. We all take a left because we live in Londonderry and use Londonderry town facilities, which is to the left. You go to the right, you're commuting to Hudson or Nashua. That's a small, small percentage of that. All the people take a left. You have data for the lesser-used intersection that this whole development affects. I would be willing to bet if you did a traffic study on the correct intersection, those delays would be significantly more than this lightly, more lightly-used intersection. One of the iterations, it was suggested by the developer that we'll put a sign that says "Right Turn Only" out at the development. I would argue that point, that I feel that those are very difficult to enforce from a police sense, and I don't think they would appreciate multiple calls on a regular basis because people are still trying to push it and take a left. So, I think that's gonna, it's gonna be pretty hard to prevent unless the entrance to this development is out onto 102. The other concerns we have about traffic isn't just us sitting in our cars and waiting to get out onto 102. Yes, it's annoying, especially at peak hours. It's already bad with the daycare on that side of Young Road, right? In that intersection, the one that is not in the traffic study. But we all use Young Road as part of our neighborhood. Yes, I'm Copperfield Lane, one dead-end road. I do not consider that just my neighborhood. When everyone walks, including the, the homes and the residents on Crosby, Apple Blossom, and Ball, which are behind that daycare and also connect to Cross and Young Road, we all walk together. The daycare, I see them daily. They take their strollers out with eight children out onto Young Road, and they walk up down my street, down my cul-de-sac on Copperfield Lane. I would argue, how safe is that going to be with the additional, I don't know, there's twenty houses here? However many bedrooms, you're talking another forty cars, maybe fifty, sixty cars, depending on the home? I don't like it. And the likelihood of there being a sidewalk being allowed on Young Road, highly unlikely. There's a culvert that goes right through it because we have a stream that goes right down the middle of Young Road with a bridge. So, I don't think a sidewalk is at all possible. But we frequently go from Copperfield over up Crosby, down Apple Blossom, and we use that Young Road and connect and really make that a full neighborhood. And I really feel strongly that this is gonna drastically change the character of our neighborhood, and I don't feel that that is the right thing to do. And I also believe you're asking to be, you're asked to be making a decision with the wrong data that is not showing the true picture and the true concern that we have as residents. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Thank you.
Gentlemen in the back, and then I'll, I'll get to the, the middle row there. They refer us with their hands up. Everyone will get a chance, believe me. Name and address, please.
Dan McLeod. I'm in a butter at Eleven Copperfield Lane. And I just, you know, I will, rather than repeat what was better said more eloquently before me, I just will agree with both the Youngs and Sarah as well on those points of, of traffic. And I think that the, the waiver points are doing exactly their, you know, these regulations and this model that you guys are talking about are doing its job. It's stopping too much development, too much traffic, and too much going on at any one time. It's making it iterative, which I think is doing its job. I would say I'm opposed to this development. It, it reduces the, the value of our entire neighborhood in Copperfield Lane. As Sarah had said, you know, this is a, this is a community that our children, our pets, right? All of us as members are walking these areas and adding significant amounts of traffic. Not good, nor for our community. It also removes the buffers. You know, when I, when I bought this home, I once lived at, on Kit Lane, and because of the Woodmont expansion that was allowed behind it and ruined our view, I moved over to Copperfield Lane. to Copperfield Lane. And before buying the property, I went into the clerk's office and we asked about it. We said, "Well, is there any building possible back there?" And we were told that, "Well, with the lands there and the easement of the gas line behind you guys, there's no building there." And this is the second iteration of building I've had to keep my private end-of-the-street home from. You know, there's an amount of privacy, and that's why I put our life savings into it. So it absolutely removes that value and removes that value to all the members of Copperfield Lane on top of the traffic issues and on top of, as far as I'm concerned, these regulations for the, you know, for the traffic are doing what they're supposed to do, stop too much development too soon. You know, we see Woodmont is still, you know, we've started that development a long time, and it's still an empty lot, right? So I think we need to be conservative about developing in Londonderry. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. And gentleman in the middle row there. Name and, name and address, please.
My name is Phil Pitts. I'm Winnie Pitts's son. I was born in Londonderry not quite as long ago as the Young family, 1963. I grew up in that little farmhouse that my parents were trying to sell. I learned how to drive in Londonderry, graduated from Londonderry High School. I just get the sense that, I mean, I get it. Route 102 is loaded with traffic. You can't have a, you can't have a conversation in my parents' driveway because of the traffic on 102. Is everybody familiar with the area? Have they driven through there? We're talking about adding 19 homes, 19 new buildings. If you're leaving that, that area, you're going three ways. You're going, you're going west to Nashua, you're going east to downtown, or you're going north to Manchester. We got 19 residences. Half the world now, 60% of us, 50% of us, especially in newer homes, are working from home. I mean, it isn't the same schedule as we had back, you know, in the 1980s where everybody, everybody was jumping on 93 at 6:30 in the morning. It's a different world, thankfully. I just, that Young Road, if you add traffic from 19 homes, 19 new homes, half a home are probably working from home, if you add that traffic, I don't think anybody's gonna notice. I mean, I know that, I learned how to ride a bicycle on that road. I mean, the, you're more likely to get hurt by a turkey even after those 19 homes are there than anything else. It is a quiet, quiet area. Steve and his wife have a beautiful place there. They're not a butters. It's, I don't know, it's probably three-quarters of a mile away from the project. I really, I mean, I don't visualize any noticeable impact on the Young family estate. We had to change the whole scope of the project because the original project, the original project had 40 homes. No changes the character of the neighborhood. Okay, we dropped from 40, got down to 19 new homes. Now from 40 to 19, the problem is traffic. This process has been a couple of years going. My parents are super elderly. They want to get this, they've been paying taxes here since 1963. They want to get this process behind them. Quite honestly, while they're still alive. We got, what, 160 units in congested, in a congested neighborhood, abutting the property now with the cross-farm project? I mean, all of the objection and drama and creative hearsay about 19 new residences is just, it's bewildering to me. And I really hope you give some consideration. And I would encourage, if you're not super familiar with the project, I would encourage you to pull into 22 Young Road any time of the day, after 5:30 in the morning, till 10:00 at night, and sit in the driveway, open your windows, and have a cup of coffee. It's not a quiet neighborhood that it was back in 1975. So that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name is Lisa Costa. I'm Winnie's daughter-in-law. Also, I'm not in Londonderry at this time, Atkinson. But I've been pulling, I've lived at 22 Young Road in the 90s, and also I've been going, pulling in and out of 22 Young Road since 1988. So I've been with Phil for 35 years. His parents have been at the farm. Somebody from the Pitts family has lived at the farm since I've known them, right? So they bought the farm in 63. 102 was not there. I don't know if you guys know that. They bought a quiet farmhouse, just like the Youngs had, and then the government put a highway next to their house. My husband's lost three animals, five animals, three, two dogs, two cats, to 102. 102 is a menace. I mean, there's no doubt. I'm not, I've pulled out of, I've learned, pulling out of 22 Young Road, if you're going right, you go right, you go down 102. You go left, you're gonna go left down Young Road and go up, that's an easier intersection to get out. But from a traffic perspective, there's, I've never been behind another car. I've been the only car every single time. So I'm also an engineer, so I understand how models and statistics, it's the same thing with the whole pandemic. They couldn't use the same model on the small towns in New Hampshire because it made it look like there was a huge issue with the numbers of people with the coronavirus because you can't take a model that's meant to do large towns and bring it to a small town. That road has so little traffic that all of this makes it look like a big deal because it's such low numbers. And that's just a fact of engineering. When it comes to models and percentages, things start to look huge. You know, when you say something like a 33% increase, it's, you know, one more. It's just a totally different, you know, I understand why the numbers don't work and why the model isn't particularly representing. But I think it's a beautiful neighborhood. Getting houses off of, right off of 102, like Winnie and Ed's house is, right on 102, is fantastic. I think it'd be great for the town. I mean, right now, it's just not usable right near the road. So getting anything further back off the road would be great. I think there'll be beautiful homes, and people want to live in Londonderry. I think you guys would have a great community to add to the community that's already there, and I think they'll love it personally.
Thank you. Gentlemen back there, yes.
Again, Dan McLeod, 11 Copperfield Lane, in a butter, and live in town. So I would just, you know, I would hope that, you know, clearly those who are gonna financially be helped by the situation and don't live in town, I would hope their comments about traffic and what goes on and what happens on those streets would be taken with a grain of salt considering that the people who live here are speaking and what we deal with every day and what we do from morning to night on those streets. So just kinda, I just wanted to set that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
One point I meant to address when I was looking for it, it just escaped me. The comment was made that the property was not buildable prior to this. If anybody on Copperfield thought that that property wasn't buildable, that was commercially-zoned Right now, we're talking about putting in 20 nice new high-end homes who are also gonna have children, pets. The kids are gonna play sports. It's just a nice addition to the neighborhood. I mean, this thing falls apart, we're gonna be back at the zoning board, potentially getting the thing rezoned back to commercial property. I mean, again, like my wife said, it's a nice addition to the community. It adds tax dollars, it adds families, adds to the school system. It's a win-win.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Ray Breslin.
Oh, boy.
Welcome, Ray.
Ray Breslin, 3 Gary Drive. We've heard a lot of testimony here from, on both sides, and, which is good. Everybody should have their own opinion about it. But this thing about traffic, we've heard a little different stories on that, too. But I've been over there, I've pulled out of there, and if you're gonna pull out of Young Road onto 102 and you're gonna go to the left, good luck, unless you want to get T-boned. I mean, you can pull out of there, but they're coming at 50, 55 miles an hour, and it's kind of blind looking in that direction. Okay? So what we're talking about here is the health and safety of the citizens, both the citizens that live there now and potentially the citizens that may live there if this goes forward. And with all due respect, the purpose of the board is to consider the health and welfare of the citizens of Londonderry, those that live here now and those that potentially may live here in the future. So the traffic issue has been of concern, it's been of concern since this was really brought up to begin with. It's always been a concern. And, and the people that live in the area have spoken, and I think you seriously need to take that into consideration. The other folks that own the property and the developer, they certainly have a right to, it's their property, they certainly have a right to put this forward. And, but the greatest concern is the health and welfare of the citizens. This traffic issue is an issue, it is a concern, and I, for one, would like to know whether anybody has gone to the state of New Hampshire and got their opinion on traffic pulling onto There was brought up about another driveway cut on the property directly off. That was kind of put aside because, I don't know, maybe this was a better idea from their standpoint. But I think we really need to consider what this is about, and it's the health and safety of anybody that's gonna be pulling out of there. Even if you go, take a left out of there and go up Page Road, and if you're going to Derry or Londonderry, with all the traffic volume on 102, I don't care what time of day, unless it's in the middle of the night, all kinds of traffic, a lot of truck traffic, a lot of car traffic, I'm surprised there's so many people on the road during the day. I have to wonder whether anybody's got a job. I just wanted to say that, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, you're welcome, Ray. Ma'am? Yes?
I just really want to make the point again, Sarah Clark, 7 Copperfield Lane. I don't know when the Pitts lived near, or, you know, maybe the mother still lives there, whichever, but that, when that daycare came in and the daycare expanded, right? They bought the, they bought the building behind the daycare. That daycare has expanded significantly in the past several years since that daycare first opened. And that daycare has significantly impacted our quality of life in that neighborhood at that intersection that is conveniently not included in the traffic study. So that where, as they said, most residents are gonna come out of this development and take a left, that is the intersection we need data for because I'd be willing to bet it's going to increase way more than the traffic that's turning to the right because that's where everybody's coming in and out of the daycare, dropping their kids off in the morning to go to work. Because guess what? People still are going to work, and they're picking them up in the afternoon. God, I would say almost all the time, when I come out and I take a left, because that's what most of us do, you are sitting at, behind a car at that intersection very frequently. Might not have been the case 10 years ago. It is definitely the case now, and this is going to exasperate that significantly. And we don't have the data, though, to show us that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, are we allowed to ask questions of the public?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions.
So, Ms. Clark, if I could ask you a question?
Could you come back to the mic, please?
So it's obviously you're not in favor of this project. What would you be in favor of on that property? Because it's, I mean, let's, let's be honest, right? It's developable land in Londonderry, and it's gonna be something, whether they sell it to another developer, you know, there's, it's R3 rated, so my question is, would you like a nursing home there?
Honestly, probably. I might even like that. I think that would probably be a less traffic. Or I bet you, if it is commercial, what does the likelihood of that go? If this was going out on 102, I don't even think I'd be here. Maybe I'd be like, "Hey, can you put a buffer a little bit in my backyard?" That's what I'd ask for. I understand, I'm not against development, I'm not anti-that. I understand, if you own land, you should do, be able to do something with your land. I understand that. But I really do feel that there is already a big traffic issue there. I'm not just making this up. We walk it almost every day. And I do think this is gonna drastically change the character of that neighborhood. And if you were gonna put a commercial property there, and there's gonna be only one entrance in and out of it, and if you're gonna put it on Young Road across from that fire department as well and increase that traffic, I can tell you I will be back here because that is a concern for everybody in that neighborhood. If it's out on 102, bye-bye. Okay? So that's the real concern for that other intersection that's not on that report.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, a couple of things. Yeah, I'm good, thank you. What was the, in the, your peak hour, how many cars were there?
I believe it was seven. Seven's going one way, five's going another, that's what it was. Seven vehicle trips going one way.
Are we coming onto Nashua Road or are we coming onto Young Road?
This is...
I guess, what are your peak trips at the Nashua Road and Young Road intersection per hour?
Yeah, just give me a second. I've lost all my paperwork here. All right. AM peak, sorry, it's 17 trips, five in, 12 out. PM peak, 21 vehicle trips, 13 in, 8 out.
But again, Jeff, that's, that's into Lily Lane.
Into the, into Lily Lane, yes.
I'm looking to, I'm looking to go from Young Road onto 102. What your peak trips are.
Oh, okay, I gotta go hit the charts for that.
Yeah.
And you're looking build condition, build condition with the site, 2024, onto Young Road, we got 11 vehicles turning left, five vehicles turning right.
Left towards, left towards going into Londonderry and right, turning to Hudson?
Correct. That's at the AM hour.
And that, that was 11 in what?
11 and 5.
11 and 5.
That's total, that includes...
That includes the development around it, correct?
That includes the development around it. So there's seven from our project, five from the development around it.
Okay. Back to, back to your peak trips coming out of Lily Lane. How many, how many did you say? So Lily Lane onto Young Road.
There are seven, max. This, you know, AMP, I'm picking the max, seven.
So your max is seven going onto Young Road from Lily Lane?
Correct. That's the one trip every eight minutes. Eight times, seven is 56.
So we'll make, let's make the assumption that all seven of those cars are going left onto Young Road. How many cars, so that's seven cars an hour, correct?
Correct. Seven cars an hour, one every eight minutes.
One every, that was gonna be my next question. How many cars a minute is seven cars?
That's one, one every eight minutes.
One car every eight minutes.
Point 116 per minute, so.
Point 116 cars per minute. In your peak hour, if we took the data and said, "Everybody coming out of Young, everybody coming out of Lily Lane," excuse me, "is turning left onto Young Road," you're saying there's an increase of...
Seven.
Seven, which was, how many per minute? Point 117?
Yeah, well, eight, every eight minutes a car. It's easy to look at it that way.
So if we then took that and made the assumption that all those cars were going to the intersection... that they're talking about, we're adding one car every eight minutes. Point 1117 cars per minute.
And the delay is 150 seconds maximum with all these cars. So by the time you get there, the idea would, somebody would have already have left. And that's why the queuing is, is less than five at all times.
So that's making the assumption that all seven cars are going to the intersection on the other side of Young Road. So one car every eight minutes.
It would be the same situation.
Correct.
If you send everything to the other side.
I'm just trying to move it to the other side of the road, is we're saying there's going to be one car every eight minutes.
Just so you know, I did talk to the traffic engineer about that, and he said it would, if we're going to do that, if we're going, instead of everybody going right, if everybody goes left, the same situation's going to occur, your same percentages are going to occur. Because Young Road has got a beginning and an end, and you're right there. It's not like there are other roads coming onto Young Road. Imagine a bigger network, and it gets a little bit more complex. Our network is Young Road, which is a very small road, and it's only Copperfield, us, the fire station, and the daycare, and the Youngs on it.
Be careful, Jeff, this crossroad, too.
Crossroad, too, yeah.
But I, what I'm getting at is that the vehicles coming out of the development. So you're saying there's seven an hour at your, your very max peak, there's seven cars an hour, which is one car every eight minutes. Thank you.
Eight minutes, correct.
There was a comment on the, I think, Mrs. Young, I think you might have said it, there was a comment on the, the development is directly across the street from the fire department. Where in relation to the entrance to the fire department is the entrance to Lily Road? Is it directly across the street from the fire?
No, it's further up Young Road. It's the entrance to this place.
Do you know how much further up Young Road that is?
You're going to ask me that?
Just slightly up to the north.
It may show up, yeah, there you go.
I saw it on, I don't know how to measure it on this TV, but I saw it.
Basically the driveway is the existing farmhouse?
Correct, yes.
How far do you think of it?
150 feet.
150 feet, okay. I heard some questions on, or I heard a statement on some conservative development. This was originally a C2 property, correct? Or one of the properties was C2? To give you an idea of a C2 property, some of our uses are a wholesale business of 250,000 square feet or more, a warehouse and storage of 250,000 square feet or more, a sexually-oriented business, a fast food restaurant, research and development laboratories, more manufacturing, 250,000 square feet of manufacturing, workforce housing. There's a lot of things that would be permitted in that C2 district that I think would make a bigger impact than, what is it, 21 homes?
21 new homes.
But technically 19, because there's two already existing. So that's kind of some of what this could have been. And when this did originally come to us, I believe it was upwards of 40 houses, correct?
We, we originally came in with 55 homes. Then we trimmed it down. We were trying to follow, follow the DES soil lot load calculations. That's what we were asking for, for relief. And we had done a traffic impact study even with that, and we were not causing any queuing even at that point. You know, we, we obviously hear a lot of the public and, you know, understand the public health and safety, but every one of us has been driving a vehicle, you know, I've been driving since I was 16. I'm almost 40 years old at this point. When a fire truck comes on and a siren starts ripping out, there's no one in this room that doesn't pull over immediately to get out of the way. You know, we're not creating a queuing issue that the fire department will not be able to come out. And with one car, the, the increase is just, it's so small. It's not, it's not us playing the game with the model. It's not this, it's not that. We're increasing this, the amount of traffic on this in such a small fashion.
I guess, I guess with that, Mr. Chair, some of the things that I'm getting at, and I, I hear everybody here, Anne had addressed the comment about the fire chief, there was no comments in design review from the fire department. You know, I, I look at what this had the potential to be or could be, and I think, though it's a 21-lot subdivision, it's only 19 new homes, I think that's a, a good solution compared to a 250,000-square-foot facility or workforce housing, or I think somebody said a nursing home. So, you know, with that, I know there's a lot here, but...
Yeah, I just want to say, I know, when the request came to this board for rezoning of the residential parcel, the board discussed C2 for, for both parcels. The recommendation was, I mean, the applicant wanted rezoning to R3. So I know the board had considerable discussion about what's R3 impact versus, you know, commercial 2 impact. Majority of the board said residential 3 would be preferable. The decision was made by the town council because they are the governing board. The board only makes a recommendation on rezoning. The town council voted to rezone it to, you know, R3.
And Art, if you remember from that meeting, which I do, you know, there was questions asked of me and what our direction was with this. What, how are we going to do? Were we going to exploit the R3? Were we going to try to put in apartment buildings? Were we going to try to really, you know, get as much as we could? I mean, did we get as much as we could? Yes. But I stuck to my word throughout this whole process and have stuck with the style of home styles that we said that we were going to build in this area. And we've made it work. And I mean, this development is not, you know, everyone likes to throw a negative connotation on it, but the reality is, is we're trying to create an all-inclusive-style development of single-family homes that are relatively, a little bit more, I mean, more affordable versus your standard subdivision out there that, you know, which we were also doing in town. But, you know, this development, you know, we, and to be clear also with, when we were going through the variance process and trying to get for an increase in density, I met with every one of these people on, on Copperfield Estates, and we heard every one of their, you know, concerns of traffic, this, that, and everything, and buffering, and I've taken that into consideration. You can't see it on this small map because it's zoomed in, but the amount of buffering in between our development and Copperfield Estates, it's something that we make a, a huge priority. I want to be able to sell homes. I don't want to be in their backyard, just like they don't want us in their backyard. And we understand that completely. And just like their kids play on that subdivision, we want to create a development where these new residents, mostly, and I'll be honest with you, I've had a lot of interest on this subdivision from residents in town who want to sell their home in town and live in a step-up style development, keeping Londonderry residents in this town. And in my whole marketing campaign for this entire thing, I already have lists printed out where I follow different income brackets that can afford the style homes that I want. And my, every bit of that is going towards Londonderry residents. You'll probably get one in your mail if you fit into that category. But this is who I'm, what I'm trying to do with this development, and I understand we're, you know, triggering the parameters of the traffic study, but in no way, shape, or form are we creating an issue on this road. It's just the models don't, don't reflect that.
Art?
Yes, Anne?
One last thing, just to clarify that, because there had been mention of an exit directly onto Route 102. And why did not that, why didn't that happen? Was it the state had issues with that?
We can foresee that there would be a problem with that, Anne.
Okay, I just want to make it out there.
The proximity, the proximity to Young Road to that, any future curb cut for that parcel would be problematic.
Okay.
Yeah, I recall, was not a curb cut there, and that section of 102 was what the state determines is a limited access highway. So there's limited access onto it. So it wouldn't be, you know, too much traffic coming out at different points. That causes a lot of problems.
I just wanted that to get out there, so if people had any questions about that.
If you remember what it took to, to get the turn lane for Cross Farm.
Yep.
And, and the amount of traffic that Cross Farm actually generates as a result of the 200 units out there.
Right.
It's much, much more significant.
And the lack of a traffic light there.
Correct. And again, the warrants, and that, the warrants weren't even met.
Right, you can't put a traffic light on just because you want to, or the board wants to, the applicant wants to. You've got to meet traffic warrants, and either you do or you don't. And I would just like to, we all know, it's standard practice, I've been doing it for 40 years, you'd prefer not to come onto a busy street unless you're commercial. And if you're a gas station, you want to come onto a busy street. If you're residential, my whole life I've been trying to avoid busy streets. So when we met with John and, and others at the, at the staff, they immediately said, hey, see what you could do about not entering on 102, because that's going to be a big problem. And obviously, we agreed and made the change.
I know this, this board and also the town council have had strong concerns on the speed of that section of 102. And it was two years ago that the council put onto our town meeting warrant to petition the state to reduce the speed limit on 102. Majority voted keep it the same.
They want to go fast.
So, I mean, we've been looking at ways to, to reduce speed and traffic safety, but when you put it to the town for, for a vote, they don't always feel the same way, so. That's town meeting, history of town meeting. That's the direction you go, what people say. Is there anyone else in the public have any questions, comments, and concerns in regards to this lot line adjustment and subdivision? Ma'am, yes?
Hi.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm getting to know you pretty well now.
No, I'm sorry. So Erin, you, you mentioned...
Almost as popular as Ray.
You mentioned about the buffer. So in previous conversations with the previous development, you offered to put in a berm with a fence between the properties on Copperfield and your development. And at the time, because you were going over the gas easement, you were shifting, you actually even shifted your development more to, towards Cross Farms to provide a greater buffer between us and, and this development. And now the development's almost kind of shifted to the right. So I, I'm just curious, are you still putting a berm with that fence?
No, we did not propose that because we had, we, we've kept a significant amount of buffer. You can see the open space that runs up all between that. And then from the, I, I don't have the scale in front of me. I think Jeff is maybe possibly getting that right now. We do have an overview of it. But, you know, we have a significant amount of different distance there. The reason for the proposed berm that I was proposing to you was, one, the density was a lot higher in that development. This development is a buy right in the R3 zone, and, and we, we've made it a point to stay as far away from those homes as possible.
So by open space, do you mean you're taking down all those trees up to that line?
No, those trees will all be there. No.
Oh, okay. So those are all going to be trees there in that open space?
Yeah, if there needs to be, if you wanted a condition of, obviously where the lot lines are, to have a kind of a no-cut line, we're open to things like that.
Okay.
I have no reason to want to have my backyard of a lot.
Right, perfect.
I think it's 14 and 18, so I have no problems with that, if that's a condition of the board.
Okay.
Actually, it technically is a requirement of the board, so your requirement is 50-foot buffer around the whole perimeter.
Yeah.
Except for when you would butt other residential properties, then it increases to 100 feet. And in that landscape buffer, you're supposed to keep as many trees as possible, and if you are cutting down trees, you're supposed to add trees. We've worked with Kelly many, several times, and Sylvia, to make sure that we're maintaining that rule, and we are. So there's basically 100 foot of trees between the rear lot line of these projects and, and the property line. So every house will, the house itself is even further than 100 feet, but this, from the lot line to the lot line is 100 feet of buffer. And the only exception to that is out front where the stormwater base is. See where that north arrow is? To the lower right of that north arrow. And that area, interestingly, has a restriction already on it to not cut trees that Erin told me about. So we're not cutting trees here, and we are proposing to landscape plan a bunch of new trees because that was where the house is. Well, that is where the house is. So once we take the house down, there are obviously no trees where the house is, so we're adding trees where the house is to create more buffer. So that's in, it's baked into the plan already, and it's baked into your regulations.
Great. Thank you very much for that.
Okay. Yes, Barbara?
Here's a real disconnect here. We've heard from Ms. Clark, and I thought she explained it very eloquently, that the real issue is with the traffic at the other end of Young Road, where there is the Learning Tree Early Education Center, 200 families coming and going twice per day. Now, how did we get to that point of saying that there's such a little tiny road, there's almost no traffic on it, when you have these 200 families coming and going at the other end of Young Road twice a day? And I'm thinking, what I heard the gentleman say earlier is that the area of the traffic analysis doesn't extend as far as the other end of Young Road. That's, if you only look at part of Young Road, it's going to look like very little traffic. But if you extend that analysis to the intersection, the other intersection of Young Road, Crosby Road, 102, that's where you're going to see a serious problem. And I would submit that at a minimum, this planning board should require the applicants, before you go ahead, to extend their traffic impact analysis to look at the entire length of Young Road, particularly the impact on the education, the families in the early education center. I didn't see any mention of that early education center in the entire traffic analysis. So I think it would be an abusive discretion for this planning board not to have full information before it makes its decision, and therefore that it should ask the applicants to do the, to give them, to give you that full picture before you make your decision and extend that traffic analysis. Thank you.
Mrs. Young, could I just, just real quick, we talked a little bit about that, and whether they extended the traffic analysis out to that intersection or not, what wouldn't change is how many cars are coming out of Lily Lane, which is at a peak, seven cars per hour, which is one car every eight minutes.
Right. That's what they're saying now, but it's not in their traffic analysis report of how that would impact. You're just going on there, say so that, oh yeah, so it wouldn't be a problem. They're required to really look at the full picture. Maybe that's how it comes out, but maybe not. That's what I think is incumbent upon this planning board, is to get it in writing from the traffic engineer, which we do not have with us today, so that you can be confident that this is not going to pose a serious risk to the health and safety of these people going in and out of that early education center.
I can try, Art, please.
Okay.
So I think, I think Jake did get to the crux of your problem, and I, I think that we, we do have the information that we need, because it's a matter of reversing it the opposite way. We have numbers that go in this direction. If we take 100% of what they said is going to go that way, and we just flip it over, 100% now is going to go that way, the number is the same, which the study proves is insignificant to data and math. It's not insignificant to the property owners, but from a statistics and math standpoint, it, it is insignificant. I'd also like to say that, that, that I have not been here for the significant time that you have. And, but I have been here since 1977, '78, and, and I have seen some significant stuff. And I've been on both sides of this table. And, and I can tell you that what I've learned about people that moved to Londonderry is that they're really smart. And in all these developments that get built, like the Kings, for example, across, across from where the middle school is now, you know, frogs are going to have seven legs, and it's the end of the world, and whatever. And when high-range road, which the north side of it used to be a dirt road when I came to town, and then it was paved, that was the end of the world. And when, when, when crossroad intersection went from that single blinking yellow light to, to a signal, fully signalized intersection, that was going to be a problem. But again, what I've learned is that people are very, very smart, and they're going to learn, when they come out of this development, to not go near the daycare intersection. They're going to go up Cross Road, up Adams Road, and they're going to find different ways to get where they need to go. I will tell you that I know quite a few people... I will tell you that I know quite a few people that live in, in the 200-home development just west of this development. And those folks have learned, they, they don't come out at certain times of day. They've made their correction. They've, they've done that. If I may also-
Yes.
I think that, I think that, and Bruce mentioned it, he's a firefighter. The assumption that, that the fire truck waits in a queue to get out of a road is, is problematic because we know that, that, that really doesn't happen. But, but, but I'm, I'm saying to you that, that we do have the information that we need. I want you to know that, that we know what we have. We have a town engineer that knows what he's doing. We have a planning director that knows what she's doing. And I, and I, as, as one person, and I will, I will tell you honestly, I will look you right in the eye, and I will tell you that I have watched every single one of these meetings, either in person, sitting in the back, or on, on cable access, because I am one of those geeks. I also watch the town council meetings, and, and I'm very well informed of what's going on. And I believe that, that this board has enough information to either thumbs up or thumbs down. But, but at some point, you need to trust that we have that. That, that's part of, that's part of this process. Data is data, but common sense is common sense. And, and when things do make sense, they make sense. And thank you for listening, and thank you for the time, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Yeah, and we have our own traffic engineer also, who has reviewed all the, all the data. I don't know if they had anything to add, Dave? Oh, yeah, use, use the mic over there.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
As in, it's been reviewed. It meets the requirements. There's, there are two waivers that, in my opinion, are reasonably requested. And they're reasonably requested because the, it's been lots of talks about numbers and percentages and the like. But when you have a low-volume road, you know, you're going to have high percentages. And when you have a road like 102, and you're trying to get on it, you're going to have longer delays. And that's, and those are the two issues that are the basis for the, for the regulation that can't be met.
Bless.
And they're, and they're reasonably requested to have a waiver.
Mr. Chair? Thank you.
Dave, would you say that, is the data encompassing of the daycare? Like, the traffic generated by the daycare, is it up to date enough, the data that the applicant is submitting?
Yeah, the counts were done at the intersection of 102 and, and Young Road, and that's all-inclusive.
There's two intersections with Young Road and 102. One near the daycare and one near this project.
The near intersection, the intersection that's on that map.
Okay.
David also though too, again, so like, like we're saying, and that's why we had given them direction, everybody coming out of Lily was going to take a right, heading to the west. And the reason being, if you put, add that additional traffic to the other end of Young Road, the percentage is going to be even lower.
Because there's more traffic on that intersection to begin with.
So, again-
Because you're gaining traffic from Cross, you're, you're gaining traffic from Crosby, and then you're probably getting all the same intersection.
So, if we send them the other way, the number's going to be diluted.
Right.
Be lower.
Mr. Chair? I'd, I'd like to start to make some motions on these waivers here. Do you want to take them one by one or all together?
I would take the, the first four.
Yep.
And then I'll take the next two separate, just in case someone wants to, to vote differently.
Mr. Chair, can we close the public hearing if that is-
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I think everyone has said what they wanted to say, so I'll bring it back to the board. We have, I would say sufficient information, and I mean, it's from the professional staff.
So, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the applicant's request for the following waivers, which are number one, two, three, and four, as noted in our staff recommendation memorandum.
Motion by Jake, second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion on those first four waivers? Singing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and Chair votes affirmative.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's request for waivers number five and six, as outlined in the staff recommendation memorandum dated May 10, 2023.
Motion by Jake.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Everyone's all set?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Kelly?
Could you please add to your motion the reasoning why, why the board is supporting the waiver? I outlined in the memo the specific criteria that's cited in our regulations.
I, I'd like to add that it would result in a peculiar, peculiar, excuse me, in exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship upon the owner of the affected property. And that the alternative site planning and building design approach meets design objectives as stated in the regulations equally well or better than would, would comply with the regulations.
Okay, is the second in agreement with that?
Second's in agreement.
Okay, so, I don't have a motion, and I have a second on the, the, on our screen here, waivers five and six. Any discussion by the board? Singing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay. Sorry, I worked at Station Two for 14 years. I like the idea of more houses and more kids to come by the firehouse, but I also understand the adding more traffic to the road. But overall, I love the project.
And abstentions, none. Chair votes affirmative. Motion carries. Those waivers have been granted. We have a conditional use permit, and that has been recommended by the Conservation Commission.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a conditional use permit as outlined in the staff recommendation memorandum dated May 10, 2023.
Motion by Jake, do I have a-
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Singing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, Chair votes affirmative, and the conditional use permit has been granted. Now, we have the approval itself.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant conditional approval of the subdivision plan and site plan for a 21-unit, single-detached residential development, 22 Young Road, map six, lot 53, Zoned R3, Edgar and Winifred Pritz, trustees, owners, and 20 Young Road, map six, lot 58-2, Zoned R3, Cedar Crest Development owner and Cedar Crest Development applicant in accordance with the plans prepared by Meisner Brum Corporation dated October 7, 2022, last revised April 12, 2023, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within 120 days of the approval and prior to plan signature, and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated May 10, 2023. One question I had on that was back to Mr. D's comment earlier with, would we remove the Cons, Common, and Heritage Commission?
No, because actually Kelly found the, the DRC comments, and one of them was that the Heritage wanted them to return to the board, to them, to address the signage.
If there's any sign, it's going to be like out front.
So, another reason why though periodically, some, it's all timing at time also. Yeah. All, all timing at times, where they might go to Heritage, and Heritage says you need to come back. So, where we don't know all the particulars again, we'll say, go back to them.
Yeah, the first time at Heritage, I, I don't think you had a, planned on a sign or anything, so, I think you weren't sure. So, that's why the Heritage Commission wanted to-
So, then I'll, I'll leave my motion as steer.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Jake, second by Bruce. Any discussion on the conditional approval? Singing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, Chair votes affirmative, and motion carries.
Great. Thank you for your time.
You'll, you'll have the neighborhood watching you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to accuse myself.
Oh, oh.
Thank you, David.
Yes.
What have you been doing?
Yeah, I know. But let the record show that Gianni Verani has stepped down for our next three items. And, okay, back to- Okay. Next we have is a public hearing on an application for a FOMO review of a subdivision plan and site plan for 21-unit, single-detached residential development. Wrong one, pardon me.
High Range Road?
Yes. I just saw High Range Road, I moved down to, and I started reading the wrong one. So, forgive me, please. Public hearing on an application for FOMO review of a subdivision plan to subdivide one residential lot into three lots, number 86 High Range Road, tax map six, lot 106, Zoned Agricultural Residential 1, Belize Real Estate Holding LLC is the owner and the applicant. And this has been continued from the April 5, 2023 meeting. And just note for the record again that Gianni Verani stepped down on this, as he will on the next two, so.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, there are no outstanding checklist items. Staff would recommend the board vote to accept the application as it is substantially complete and contains sufficient information to invoke the board's jurisdiction and to allow the board to make an informed decision.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Motion by Jake, second by Bruce. Any discussion on completeness? Singing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, Chair votes affirmative, and note that there's eight voting members, that Gianni is the town manager ex officio, and there's no alternate for that position. So, the application has been accepted as complete. This starts the public hearing in the 265, 65-day timeframe, and which this board has to make a decision. So, who is doing the presentation? I just need name, address, identification, our engineering firm.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Doug McGuire. I'm with the Dubay Group, and I'm here representing the applicants of Belize Real Estate Holdings LLC on this application. So, I'll, I'll just give the board a quick overview. This is your first time seeing this particular application. It's a fairly straightforward proposal. The property is located on High Range Road. It's a property that is 14.6 acres and has several hundred feet of frontage, existing frontage on High Range Road. The proposal is a frontage lot-only subdivision, no proposed infrastructure, no, no roadways or anything like that. And so, there's an existing home on the property, and that is proposed to be created on its own smaller lot. The, and then an additional frontage lot on the northern side of the property. You can see this is a little bit of an odd shape, and so we're going to utilize that area for another building lot. And then there'll be substantial, or enough frontage in excess of 150 feet per requirements to have a, I guess, access to the remainder of the parcel, which will also have frontage on High Range Road. So, the remainder of the land, the lion's share of the land, which will be, the remainder of 12, 12 acres would, would go with that as a single-house lot. We did go through, per the requirements, and do site distance review of all three lots. We did prototypical lot grading to prove out the viability of those lots. We did drainage review, did a drainage study. And we, to accommodate these additional lots with the impervious areas associated with the new potential homes, we have a small pond that'll be located on the northerly lot, which is proposed. We've been back and forth working with staff on this, on this project. They've reviewed it. I, I believe that we've addressed all their outstanding comments. So, we're here for your final blessing. So, with that, I'll turn it back to the board and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
You have one waiver request?
We do have one waiver request, which I can speak to just quickly if you'd like.
Yes.
So, the waiver request is simply a scale request, just based on the size of the lot. It was, it would have had to be three sheets per factor. So, we had a 50 scale, everything was legible, so we're requesting that to be allowed.
Okay. To John?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, as Doug indicated, they're requesting a waiver to Section 4.01(c), pertaining to the maximum scale for certain plan sheets. The applicant submitted existing conditions, plans, high-intensity soil plans, and subdivision plans, and topographic plans at a scale of 1 inch equals 50 feet, which do not comply with Section 4.01(c) of the regs, that being a maximum of 1 inch equals 40 feet. Staff does support granting of the waiver as the plans are legible at a scale of 1 inch equals 50 feet. There are a few design review items. The applicant should obtain all project permits, indicate the permit approval numbers on the cover sheet, and provide copies of the permits for the planning department's file in accordance with the regulations. We're requesting that the, or, excuse me, second comment would be, the project is proposing roadway widening easement along High Range Road, and we're requesting that the applicant submit draft easement plans, easement deeds for review by the town. We're also requesting that they verify the DRC comments, again, with the planning department accessing Conservation Commission and Fire Department. That's all we have.
Okay, thank you, John. Anything to add, Kelly? Board, I'll start the other end, Jason.
I have no questions.
You're all set. Bruce?
So, this will be three new construction houses that will be fronted on High, High Range Road?
So, two, three lots, but two new construction houses because-
Existing.
One's existing, correct?
And what kind of utilities will they be serviced by?
Everything that's available, we got utility clearance from electric, Comcast. It's, it is going to be, each lot will be serviced by onsite water and septic. So, that's about it for the utilities.
They don't meet the requirement of 100 feet per lot for water?
They're not even close to the water.
They're not even close, right? The closest is probably the highway garage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. This is in the St. Gobain Consent Decree area.
No, actually, this is east of High Range.
It's probably because this is on the east side of High Range.
It will be eventually.
Yes, the way things are going. Roger?
Sounds just like all the other buildings on that street, so it's good to go for me.
I see no issues.
I'm all set. I see a rock wall going through the second lot, so I would assume they'll rebuild it if they're putting a driveway through. Side of that. I'm all set. I don't see any issues.
I think they discussed that with Heritage.
Or is that the, the retaining wall? There's a retaining wall that's going to be removed as part of the outside improvements.
Yeah, we, we made notations on our plans that said anywhere that there were some existing stone walls, that those would be reused. That was a request of the Heritage Commission. So, that's noted on our plans.
Great.
I'm all set.
Lynn? No questions.
Mr. Chair, I just connected some dots, and I'm wondering if I should step away from the next three also.
Uh, if there's any concern or anything, uh, I would say if there's any doubt, better step down.
So I think I should.
Okay, so let, uh, our record show that Tony has stepped down, and what I'll do is, uh...
Sorry, I didn't do it sooner, I didn't, I had no idea. I just, I just connected some dots, sorry.
It's your first night, Tony, we'll, uh, we'll... Don't know if it'll happen again.
I'll appoint Roger to, uh, vote for, uh, Al. So that gives us six, eight voting members. A little secretarial work here. Okay, Tony, step down, uh, Anne.
Um, my only com, well, I have no comments about the, uh, the division. But I would comment about the, uh, stone walls up at the road, if possible. I know it's going to be an area where you're going to be, you know, bringing a road through, but any area along the road there to try to keep the stone wall, if possible. Because that's one of the early roads, and we'd like to see some semblance of it, um, as it went through town. Thanks. I have no other questions.
Okay, and this is in somewhat of a historic area, and I believe there's three foundations on one of the properties. Uh, I think it's just a marking that the foundations are of historic interest. I haven't gone over the details of the plan yet, but everyone says so. What I'll do is, uh, I'll go to the, the public, are there any butters or anyone from the public? Have any questions, comments, or concerns in regards to this subdivision plan? And I don't see any. What I'll do is bring it back to the board. We have a waiver to, uh, to grant, and then, uh, plan itself.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ma, make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a waiver as outlined in the staff recommendation memorandum dated May tenth, twenty twenty-three, and that the waiver has no substantial detriment to the public good.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jake.
Ted.
Ted, okay. Uh, any discussion on the, uh, waiver? Sing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Sentences, chair with affirmative, and the, uh, waiver has been granted.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Approval.
I would like to make a motion to grant conditional approval of, of the subdivision plan to subdivide one residential lot into three lots, eighty-six High Range Road, map six, lot one oh six, zone AR one, Belize Real Estate Holding LLC, owner and applicant in accordance with plans prepar, prepared by the Dubay Group, uh, dated April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, last revised March ninth, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within two years of the approval and prior to plan signature, and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
By Jake, second by Ted. Any discussion by the board? Sing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Sentences, chair with affirmative, and, uh, motion carries, you have a conditionally approved subdivision plan.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I'm sure, uh... Let me, uh... Next is a, uh, public hearing on an application for a conditional use permit per London Dury zoning ordinance, section six point three, point eleven, point C, and use table four point one, point two, to allow multi-family residential use on Route twenty-eight for Foma Sovalay District, two fifteen Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot twenty-three dash two, zone commercial two, and Route twenty-eight P O D, and two seventeen Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot twenty-two dash one, zone commercial two, and Route twenty-eight P O D. The N W Investment Group LLC is the owner and the applicant, and this has continued from April fifth, twenty twenty-three. And, uh, we go for completeness?
Mr. Chair, um, I'd like to make a motion to recommend, uh, the application is complete.
Second.
Okay, uh...
Mr. Chair, can I just make a note that the board just, the board needs to act on agenda, agenda item C before we can go into item D? They are related, but you need to act on the use before we can get into the site plan.
Okay, so we'll take both the CUP.
We're not on the conditional use permit?
You are on the conditional, I'm just making a note to the board that you need to go through this first, and then we can start talking about the details of the site.
This is, this is for the next, the next plan.
Correct.
Conditional use permit first, and then, and then the plan, so we can take it in proper order. Okay, thanks, Kelly. Okay, motion by Jake, uh, second by Jason. And, uh, this is for the conditional use permit, any discussion by the board? Sing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Sentences, chair with affirmative, and the conditional use pla, uh, permit has been granted. So, uh, that has been completed. Next we go for a, uh, public hearing on an application for a site plan and conditional use permit to, uh, merge two existing lots, tax map fifteen, lot twenty-two dash one, and map fifteen, lot twenty-three dash two, and construct a sixteen unit multi-family residential building with associated site improvements, two fifteen Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot twenty-three dash two, zone commercial two, and Route twenty-eight P O D, and two seventeen Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot twenty-two dash one, zone commercial two, and Route twenty-eight P O D. The N W Investment Group LLC is the owner and the applicant, and this has been continued from April fifth, twenty twenty-three. So, uh, what we really should do is the CUP first, and then, well, actually completeness, then we go to the, do the CUP.
So you have, you're discussing the conditional use permit related to the multi-family use? So you need to act on that request and then move on to the site plan completeness?
Okay, so this will just be a deal with the, uh, the CUP, uh, and I think it's, uh, self-explanatory, uh, staff input?
Uh, staff is recommending the board grant conditional approval of the conditional use permit as it relates to the multi-family use, uh, as the criteria under the zoning ordinance, section six point two and six point three eleven E have been met.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jake, second by Ted. Uh, this is on the, uh, conditional use permit, and, uh, any discussion by the board? Sing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Sentences, chair with affirmative, and the, uh, conditional use permit has been granted for multi-family. So, uh, now we'll go for completeness.
Mr. Chair, I would like to, uh, make a motion to accept this application as complete.
Okay, motion by Jake for completeness, or...
Second.
Second by Jason. A discussion on completeness? Sing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Sentences, chair with affirmative, and the application has been accepted as complete, which means we have the information in which to make a judgment on it. It starts a sixty-five day, uh, timeframe, and it also starts the, uh, public hearing on it, so. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, for the record, my name is Doug McGuire with the Dubay Group, and I'm representing, uh, the applicant's V and W Investment Group LLC. I have Mr. Verani, uh, here with me at the table. And, um, I, I thought it would be helpful if I just quickly gave the board a reminder of, because mem, certain members of the board have seen this, this, uh, there may be some new members of the board that have not. We had come conceptually before you in July of twenty-two of last year to present a plan similar to this, but we feel that we've made some improvements. And that was really just to get your, your feedback on the conditional use permit, which you have acted on, as well as some assumed relief that we would be needing in the form of waivers, and that was with the encroachment of, slight encroachment of the building, within the building setbacks, and encroachment within the green space buffer, uh, a, as part of that. And because we're in the overlay zone, those requirements fall to your jurisdiction. And so we had presented originally, uh, this plan here. And if anybody would like an eleven by seventeen copy to see clearer, I have them with me, just let me know. But essentially, this is what was presented back in July.
I'll take one just for, if you got them, I'll take it.
Nope, happy to do it.
Jake wants souvenir, so.
Yeah.
Could you sign that first?
As long as I get a signature from you guys.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm, I'm good also.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
No problem. Some of you may ask after...
Thanks, Bruce.
Some of the numbers are real small, and Kelly doesn't have this on the, uh, the, uh...
Jumbotron there. Um, okay, so this was the original proposal, and what we had done is, for anyone not familiar with this property, it's located two fifteen Rockingham Road. It's an existing commercial establishment, but it's really an older, single-family home. The development, um, is, it's a very large open curb cut. Uh, the, the, the property's in a bit of, you know, disarray. You know, looking to make improvements and improve upon this. And, you know, and that was all discussed at our, our last conceptual meeting. But some of the, the points that we were making is that in your requirements of this overlay, you have this large green space buffer. Well, all, there's a significant portion of the site which is developed right now within that buffer. And also, there's a, a large portion of the parking lot drains directly back into the conservation overlay and directly discharges untreated into the wetland system. Uh, literally, this just sheet flows right directly into the wetland system. You can see we're only about five feet away in the current condition. So we had shown this, again, conceptually, the sixteen unit development with much of this area removed and, uh, still some encroachments, and all of this impervious area eliminated out of the conservation overlay buffer. So when we met, there was some feedback that we were given by the board. Uh, one was if we could try to get a little bit more parking, because we had like thirty-two parking spaces, which was the requirement, but didn't account for any visitor parking spaces. We were able to, in the new design, get six additional spaces, so I think we have a, a substantial increase. Um, it was discussed that if, if we're doing this, we better come in with some robust landscaping to kind of enhance that green space that we're encroaching into. And I feel that we've done that with this proposal. Uh, and also, there was some talk about amenity space, um, or green space that could be used for the, for the residents. And I believe we've done that with this new, uh, layout, which has now been, you know, brought forward and, and gone through the steps. So this is our current proposal. You can see that the layout is slightly different. We're pushed further away from the road, uh, with a slightly different configuration, uh, still completely outside of the conservation overlay with as far as impervious goes, but proposing some amenity space within that area, because, you know, eliminating all that treatment, but putting in some, maybe some place for some picnic tables or something for some of the unit owners, uh, or renters, rather. And this would all be perv, pervious, it would be just like a pea gravel type thing, so it wouldn't be creating any impervious surfaces within the buffer. Uh, and then what I did, just for your comparison purposes, was give you that same graphic that, you know, I had shown conceptually, but now with this design, you can see substantially more green space maintained, substantially less, uh, encroachment into the buffering. So we dropped, I think, from like four thousand and change to two thousand and change. So a significant reduction, and the slight encroachments of the building into the setbacks is even less as originally proposed to. So wanted to just kind of give that full circle, um, update, because, you know, we said that that's what we were going to come back and try to do. I just want, you know, assure the board that that's what we did in fact do as part of this. So that's just my general overview, but the, the plans, um...
I just want to say too, it was very helpful for us as applicants to come to the board and present the plan in front of you as we originally proposed it, and get that type of feedback of what you really wanted to see, so that we could go back in and work with staff, which is great to work with, um, in the process, and really get a, you know, a design that I think you guys will like.
It, it worked well, that's... In fact, the Municipal Association recommends that, uh, uh, any plan have a, you know, conceptual discussion first to get, get everything out.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful, um, and even pre, pre, prior to that, meeting with staff and saying this is a project we're can, you know, we have a conceptual on, but it eliminates the guessing on our side.
Yeah, and our side too, so.
So, uh, just, I'll give the board members just a quick overview of what's happening on site. Kelly, I don't know if you could throw up maybe the G U for me, uh, the grading plan? Just to kind of, uh, I can walk them through what we're, what we're, you know, proposing here. Should be the next sheet. Yeah, right there, perfect. Okay, so, you know, this is our grading drainage utility plans. Um, so the building, you see on the left-hand side, access comes in. One of the things that we did with this layout is we eliminated any parking that was directly adjacent to the building. That was something that was kind of discussed a little bit at the last hearing. Uh, we added a loading space, which is just a space that's going to be marked as such, so that if, you know, somebody's getting door dash drop off or whatever, uh, there's a place for somebody to park right up close. We have our handicap access spots, uh, and then we have our remaining parking area. Our drainage is collected via closed drainage system and routed to a pond system that we have to the south, which is the top of the page, about, you know, right above the building there in the back. And that area is within the conservation overlay. It's, it was put there for a couple of reasons. One, we were getting great treatment because we're right adjacent to that wetland, and we're proposing a wet pond. So it's going to become essentially a wetland feature by design intent. Uh, so there will be a permanent pool there, um, which will naturalize right into that existing area, but also provide treatment of the stormwater, which was not happening on the site in its current condition. So, uh, we were able to get everything to drain to that one area, be treated, and then overflow as it naturally did into the wetland system, which then ultimately discharges to a pipe which outlets to, uh, underneath, uh, of Rockingham Road. We have access to sewer, water, natural gas. Um, we're making those connections via the street, uh, system, and have those shown on the plans. Well, we were able to have, uh, full fire truck turnaround access. Uh, that hammerhead design that you see there is, is enough for a fire truck or any other delivery vehicles or anything to be able to make that turnaround internally. We're eliminating two, I mean, if you, I guess you can call it two curb cuts right now. It's really kind of a wide open situation out there, but we're bringing down the two to one, and we're consolidating this lot with the adjacent lot, which had a legal curb cut, so we're essentially taking three curb cuts into one in this design. Our landscaping plan, which is the next sheet, you can see, uh, you know, we were, we were tasked with, with going kind of robust on that, and I think we've certainly done that. We're meeting your requirements for street trees and, you know, makes, making sure that where we're putting those is along that frontage. And also, you'll see in the wetland buffer area, we're, we really substantially improved that buffer area to, you know, recognizing that we are in the buffer, uh, but creating, you know, plantings to provide just a better enhancement of that system. And it also will work naturally nicely because there's a difference in grade, and so we're essentially planting the slope. So that's not going to be an area that the public's going to want to be going into. Uh, so you're really creating a much more, a, a, a much superior buffer than what is there today. And obviously, removing all of the, uh, impervious area and providing treatment for all the stormwater is a huge plus. The rest of the plan set is some of the, you know, our, our rest of our details, our lighting plans, our LED full cutoff fixtures. Uh, we have our erosion control plans. We call out our buffer impacts, if, you know, if you're looking for specific numbers on that. You know, obviously, the buffer plans... You know, obviously, the buffer plans don't categorize true impervious surface versus just impact, but we do show that. So I mean, obviously, we're having a little bit additional impact because we're temporarily putting in, you know, some impact and for the drainage purposes, but then allowing that to naturalize. We're just conservatively taking those numbers at their highest point. And then we have details. We did prepare some perspective renderings of the site, which I think, Kelly, I don't know if you have those. I think they do a great job showing, you know, what this site i- is, is really gonna look like. What I can tell you is, is that this isn't like a pretty picture type design. It's, this is a design based on the architecture of the building as proposed and also the landscaping as proposed. So when you see the landscaping, that is exactly as, like, the type of trees, the type of plants. The software that we use to create this, you can actually specify the plants. So this isn't just, oh, we made the pretty picture. It's really what it's gonna look like. So you can see that you've really got a nice breakup of the facade of the building and a breakup of the frontage of the building with the street trees. And you can see the natural area within the conservation. That's the pond in the back, naturalized in with some additional plantings. You can see the sloped area, which was one back, I think, Kelly. Yeah, right there. So that's all the plantings along that buffer strip. And you can see that area just being allowed to naturalize is, is, is gonna be a great buffer. Much far superior to what we have out there today. And, and still allow some amenity space for the, the renters to have some green space for recreation. You know, if somebody wants to, to throw a frisbee or something, they can do that in that area. And then they have that, you can see, we got a couple of people sitting in the, in the, the, the picnic table area. But, you know, that's, gives them some space away from the road to have a little bit of green space. And we're working with what we can within this site because we are kind of squished between your regulations of buffer setbacks on the frontage, but then also the conservation overlay buffers on the back. So kind of trying to balance that. I think, I, you know, I hope you feel we hit the mark on that. We feel that we did. But that's, that's really where we're at. We've been working with staff back and forth on engineering-related comments and moving our state permits forward. And we're in good position on that. I think we're in good shape with staff, but they'll be able to speak to that. And I guess with that, I'll turn it back to the board. I can speak to the waivers. I know you said you liked to have me do everything at once. I can talk about those waivers if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay. So the waivers on this particular application, as we talked about, we have a few. Where are my waivers? Hold on, I got it here somewhere. I got a lot of paper. Yes, perfect. Okay. So we have a total of four waiver requests on this application. The first is regarding the encroachment of the building, as we talked about. And so that's detailed on that, on that handout there. So we're talking about this minor encroachment here in the front setback and some, just the, the little decks areas on the building are just slightly encroaching on the left-hand side. So that's, that's a total of three hundred forty-two square feet within that buffer. The existing building out there today is six hundred forty-three square feet into the buffer. So we're making a better situation. So that's one of the waivers being requested. And then the other is for the pavement and, within that front buffer. So that's again, this small area here, and then there's a small strip that we're slightly over on the side setback as well. So we're a little in the front, a little in the side. That's a total square footage of two thousand three hundred sixty. Existing out there today is five thousand eight hundred ninety-nine. So again, a reduction and a significant pull away from the frontage, which was, you know, the goal of the ordinance to try to create that front green space as part of that. So that's the second waiver that we're requesting. And then the third are more engineering-related, and John can speak to that. But we're, we have a pipe velocity request. And that's simply because, because of your minimum pipe size that your ordinance or your regulations require, we don't have enough water going to the pipes to create that minimum velocity during the two-year storm. But higher storms would achieve the cleansing velocities. And then we have a couple areas, just because we're trying to keep our pipes as high as we could to get into the wet pond system that we have on site. We have a little less than the three feet of cover required. But in those areas, we're reinforcing those pipes with reinforced concrete as opposed to the HDPE. So shouldn't be, you know, any type of a structural issue. So those are our waiver requests. And then obviously, we have the conditional use permit for the, the bu- wetland buffer encroachment. I will speak to that just briefly. The conservation commission did review this and they had some concerns with the buffer encroachment. You know, I feel that we've made a lot of improvements. I mean, we've, this, we've been working on this a couple of different iterations, a couple of different ideas. We were looking at a mixed-use development at one point. We had impervious area. We had parking drive aisles within the buffer at one point on one of our layouts. These were all worked through with the conservation commission. And when we ended up on this one and pulled ourself completely out, you know, I, I, that was our, kind of our best, our best foot forward that we could come up with by getting completely out of there. You know, they're still brought up some concerns regarding snow storage not being in the buffer. Our thought was, I mean, we did eliminate it, but snow storage within this portion of the buffer, we intentionally graded this area so that it graded away from the wetlands and towards our parking lot. So any melt will come on to the parking lot, go into the closed drainage system and then be treated through our system. So I, I don't see that as a concern. The conservation overlay signs, they're saying those should be at the buffer. Well, again, we're utilizing, I'll use the visual here. This is a little bit easier to see. So you can see, there is a portion of lawn's green space that is within the buffer. We are not proposing to prohibit people from using that 'cause we'd like to see the, the residents be able to have some green space, be able to utilize. And then we just are heavily buffering and sloping that remaining area and allowing that area to naturalize. And so our signage is placed there. I mean, obviously, if the board has serious concerns, we could prohibit that. I just, I just see that we have enough and it's such an improvement over the existing condition that I think there's some latitude there. They recommended against a pear tree. We were, eliminated that. They said something about no more than fifty percent of the detention pond should be in the buffer and then twenty-five should remain natural. That's not something that we can do just based on sizing. So we do have, I mean, obviously, if you could imagine, we wouldn't have any capacity there if we pulled that any further away. But my argument in that, about regarding that is, this area is essentially all a buffer. I mean, it's, it's a wet pond. People aren't gonna be walking through that. It's essentially a wetland. It's a better enhancement to the wetland system than it being just grass, in my opinion. Because you're actually getting some, you're promoting wildlife habitat with the wet feature. So I see it as a benefit. And then the patio, they were saying they didn't think were allowed in the buffer. They may not have been cleared that it was not an impervious patio, that it was just pea gravel. It's porous. And so, so for those reasons, we feel that we do meet the intent of the, of the CUP request. But I just wanted to touch on those 'cause I know those are in your notes as items that were brought up by the conservation commission. So with that, I will turn it back to you guys and happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. So we're staff, we'll do the board and then anyone from the public. So John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll go through the waiver requests. Request number one is the Londonary Zoning Ordinance, section four point six, point seven, point seven, point C, pertaining to the dimensional requirements in the overlay district. The applicant is proposed to encroach five feet into this front building setback. The design provides approximately fifty-five feet of the required sixty-foot front building setback, which is required by, by the zoning ordinance. Staff does support granting the waiver as it, as it is consistent with the conditions of the Londonary Zoning Ordinance, section six point one, eleven point E. Second waiver request was the section four point six, point seven, point D, pertaining to the dimensional requirements in the overlay district. The applicant is proposing grading and pavement within the front and side landscape buffer, which deviates from the zoning ordinance. Staff supports granting the waiver. It is, it is consistent with the conditions of Londonary Zoning Ordinance, six point one, point eleven, point E. They're requesting a waiver to the Londonary Site Plan Regulation, section three point oh seven G two, pertaining to these velocities in the, the drainage pipe. As Doug elaborated, basically, there's not enough flow going to that insufficient flow that exists to produce the, the minimum pipe velocity. Therefore, we do some, support that waiver request. The last waiver request is, as it pertains to the pipe cover. They are providing, they're not providing thirty-six inches of cover over the overall proposed pipes as required by the regs, but have provided a wet and waiver request. And they, staff again does support this because they are providing reinforced concrete pipe in this instance. I'll let Kelly discuss the conditional use permit, but I'll just summarize the design review. The applicant should provide a legend and, that shows and describes each symbol and abbreviation used on each sheet of the plan set per the regulations. Item six on the cover sheet, they should add the permit approval numbers to the list of required permits and provide copies of the squared permits to the planning department for their files in accordance with the regs. Item seven, we're asking that they place a professional engineering stamp from a licensed PE in the state of New Hampshire on the drainage report. We're also asking that the applicant has provided the existing conditions information via an exhibit plan dated August nineteenth, twenty-two. However, the plan does not note how the existing conditions overlay relates to the last approved site plan. We want them to confirm with the town that they are satisfied with the information provided. We're requesting that they verify the comments of the planning department, fire department, conservation commission, sewer department, actually, the heritage. Okay, Kelly will touch upon that, have been addressed. And the applicant has submitted a traffic analysis on February ninth. There are no outstanding comments related to the traffic analysis. And as the, we've indicated again, there's two, excuse me, four waiver requests. Two to site plan regs, two to the zoning ordinance. And then again, the town, the, excuse me, the board needs to act upon the conditional use permit regarding the, the CO district. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with regard to the conditional use permit, the applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow work within the conservation overlay district, specifically to utilize the buffer, force, or portion of the buffer for stormwater system to include grading to be done within the overlay district. Additionally, the applicant's seeking to add a patio area utilizing peystone material. As the applicant pointed out, the conservation commission does not support the approval of the, of the conditional use permit for the reasons such as snow storage and the patio area not, not being allowed in the buffer as well as the issue of the detention pond being in the buffer. Staff notes that the patio material proposed is peystone, which is impervious material. The proposed table and chairs within the patio are technically impervious. However, the zoning ordinance does allow for minor accessory uses of up to two hundred square feet. This is well within that. Additionally, the total amount of impervious surface existing today is two thousand one hundred and three square feet. And the total proposed impervious surface is zero square feet within the fifty-foot buffer. This is due to significant removal of large existing parking area. Considering the cleanup reduction of impervious surface and improved buffer plantings included in this proposal, planning staff would support the conditional use permit request. Relating to the design review comments and conditions of approval, the applicant, or this project, did go before the heritage commission. However, the applicant was not present at that meeting and therefore, the heritage commission requested the applicant return to review their architectural designs. So that will be an expected condition of approval for them to go back to heritage commission. I have spoken with the applicant about that and they're agreeable to that.
Yeah, I think it's the meeting of the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, correct. And they are scheduled for that. Additionally, the applicant needs to submit a notice of lot merger because this is currently at two lots today. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ian?
I just have a question on the project, the, the building itself. Why did you go from a gable roof, I mean, a hip roof to a gable roof? I'm just curious because it seems like it's just appears so much larger from the street versus the original. They did?
I would've thought they would. Isn't that more convenient?
Yeah, that's, tends to be where they are. Picked roofs, you know, asphalt shingles, dark.
I've gotta go back to here. Do you remember, Ian?
Yeah, I know. But it just.
Well, we also need the elevator, the height of the elevator. You have to have a little headspace on the block too.
Okay, where would the elevator, elevators be placed in the building?
Yeah, there's an elevator inside the building.
In the center of the building?
Yes, and so where the elevator shaft goes up, it has to be proud of the third floor. So it's, that's why you need to have the height.
Right, but with the, with the hip roof, you could still have that height in the center, right? I'm just curious. Okay, that's just a minor thing. It's not really our purview, but.
I will say that the, the, with the pitched roof, it meets all the height requirements. We're under your maximum height within your, your zoning on that.
Yeah, my mind's just stuck on this design. Okay, no, that's fine. That's all I had.
I'll sit in.
The rest of it's fine, as far as I'm concerned.
So are you planning on market rate apartments?
Actually, with the size of the apartments, they'll probably be very affordable because they're gonna be one and two bedrooms. So it's hitting the marketplace and they're certainly gonna be more affordable than Woodmont. So, but they're in a, they're in a, this probably almost behalf of it. But, you know, they're, they're kind of servicing a market that really isn't right now 'cause everybody tries to get three bedrooms, so.
Okay, good. I like the project, so.
Thank you.
I'm all, I'm all set.
Okay. Jake?
I'm good. I think this is a, a huge improvement to what is there now. While there's still, you know, some buffer impacts. I think you guys talked a lot about the landscape. I think you've done a really good job on that. You know, you can see in the designs, you've got a lot of, right in that main area that's closest to the road, there's a pretty big buffer there. So I, I think it looks good. I know it hasn't been to the heritage commission, but I think it looks great. I see you added some brick in. I appreciate it. My only comment would be on the, and again, I mean, this is really more up to you guys. But personally, on, on the patio, it being a peystone patio, if you will, I think you're gonna be chasing peystone everywhere if, you know, there's kids or anything. So maybe looking at doing an actual permeable patio. So it's still permeable, but you're not chasing peystone everywhere. 'Cause if there's kids there, I promise it'll be in the hallway, just probably like my house, so.
Well, is that something you can change on site or does it have to come back into the planning board to say we're changing peystone to perviable?
With regard to whether it's impervious or not, if it's remaining pervious, there's no issue with impact to.
So we can explore other surfaces?
I would just need to confirm that the detail you provide is consistent with whatever potential new proposal you have.
So, I mean, I wouldn't.
No, it's a good, it's a good point.
But that's, just looking at it, I see the.
If we can do it in the field, we'll do it. If I have to come back in front of the board, probably.
Probably something I have to just be administrative. Don't need to do this stuff again.
And again, I know it hasn't been through the heritage, but, you know, I think it looks good and obviously, we have the ultimate say. So I'm all right with approving it without it being to the heritage quite yet.
Ted?
I'm glad that you rearranged the parking.
I'm glad that you rearranged the parking, as I believe I was the one making the comments about visitor parking and delivery parking. So I'm glad that you were able to.
Yeah, I'd say that was you that provided, or asked for that, so.
And in this day and age, with so many people getting deliveries from either Amazon, UPS, or someone else, you need to be able to have room for that, along with, say, you know, a mother or a friend or someone to be able to come see people who are there. So I'm wonderful to see that. I think the landscape design will be great to have. That site has certainly been lacking for quite some years, and I think it'll really be a nice key feature in the north part of town. And I think it'll, it'll completely change that whole landscape, and hopefully, it may start to change others as well.
Ugly is a nice word for what's there right now.
I was being, hey.
I grew up in the house that's there. It certainly looked a lot better back then.
It's a little bit history there.
Yeah, so that's.
And I remember when it was a little kid's museum place as well, so.
And then it was a kid's children's museum.
Metamorphosis museum.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, and like, in today's day and age, if you tried to put the children's metamorphosis museum back in that building, it just would never imply the health, safety codes or what have you, so.
No, it's all changed over.
Yeah, it's just all changed, and it's time for it to move on.
There's not much better use than with our economy going, having the apartments, I mean.
Yeah. Well, I'm hoping that's maybe a concept that could continue, you know, you'll see more properties develop in a special fashion.
May I ask, are they one, two, or three-bedroom apartments?
Yeah, I think it's one or two bedrooms.
No more than two, yeah, but.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
All set, sorry.
Roger.
I have only one comment. I have stones in the front yard, and they are constant upkeep. So I'm not sure you want to put peestones in because they're, that's number one.
I have a two-year-old kid, they're in the crib, they're in the bathroom.
But the other thing is, we need more. Thank you for bringing in some reasonably priced, smaller apartments. Because we need them here.
Only a lot, for sure.
Bruce.
I echo the comments, you know, that you look at that area, it's, it's an area where there's a lot of, you know, entry-level hourly jobs, and the idea of keeping the people who work in that area to be able to live in the area as well, I think is a great concept, and it, you know, it really fits within that particular lot in that area, where it's not too obtrusive, but it provides a nice update to that specific property. So I'm in favor of it, it looks good, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason.
Just echoing, it's massive upgrade from what's there now.
It's tough when you get to the end of the college, right? You've been dealing with that forever.
I still find something to say down there, though.
And hopefully, it's the first step in metamorphosis of that, of that end of town. So hopefully, you're kind of the groundbreaker in there, so good to see that.
Yep, it's a perfect location, it's just, as everyone says, it's a big improvement in making things better, so. And hitting the housing market where it's really needed. So anyone from the public have any questions, comments, and concerns regards to this site plan? I don't see any. We'll bring it back to the board. We've got four waivers to consider a conditional use permit and then the conditional approval itself.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's request for the above waivers as outlined in Staff Recommendation Memorandum dated May 10th, 2023, in that the waivers have no substantial detriment to the public good.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jake, second by Jason. Any discussion on those waivers? Sign that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Sentences, she was affirmative, and the four waivers have been granted. We have a conditional use permit now. There is a little difference between what the Conservation Commission wants and the staff recommends, and this has happened before, so nothing new to us, and the board is the authority on making the decision on this.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a conditional use permit as outlined in the staff's recommendation memorandum dated May 10th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Jake, second by Ted. Any discussion on the motion? Sign that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Sentences, she was affirmative, and the conditional use permit has been granted.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant conditional approval of site plan and conditional use permit to merge two existing lots, MAP 15 Lot 22-1 and MAP 15 Lot 23-2, and construct a 16-unit multifamily residential building with associated site improvements, 215 Rockingham Road, MAP 15 Lot 23-2 Zone C2 and Route 28 Performance Overlay, and 217 Rockingham Road, MAP 15 Lot 22 Zone C2 and Route 28 Performance Overlay. V and W Investment Group LLC, owner and applicant, in accordance with the plans prepared by the Dubay Group dated August 19th, 2022, last revised February 28th, '22, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within 120 days of the approval and prior to plan signature, and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the Staff Recommendation Memorandum dated May 10th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Jake, second by Ted. Any discussion on the conditional approval?
What's the timeline to build?
Yeah, spring.
So ASAP.
Probably this summer, we'll start breaking ground.
Good, good. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Sentences, she was affirmative, and you have a conditionally approved site plan and also the merging of two existing lots.
Thank you.
So the north end is changing. I was looking for the positive.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, other business, the only thing I have is on the June 14th meeting, the Heritage Commission will be in for a joint meeting. So get your pictures in of your.
Excuse me?
June 14th. 14th.
Second meeting.
Second meeting in June. First meeting of June, I don't know when it's happening because we have to wait till a week from Thursday for submission of any plans, so.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Who was first there?
Pick one.
Bruce. Second by Bruce. All of the favor, adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you.